Hi, I'm Ben.
And I'm Josh.
And this is the Bad at Magic Podcast, a podcast about games, life and other things. And welcome to episode fifty-three.
Ben, what do you know about Herbie the Love Bug?
Uh, more than I'd care to admit, Josh, that Herbie was a big part of my childhood.
Oh, really?
Yeah, well, you know, you know, in the late eighties, Disney had its golden age with all the, the stuff. Well, right before that, they had their like barren age, and that was when they were pumping out movies like Herbie the Love Bug, and I loved it.
So really, you should be talking about why Herbie the Love Bug is referencing to episode fifty-three.
Absolutely. Fifty-three is the number that's painted in the middle of his racing stripes.
Ah, but do you know why fifty-three is painted on Herbie the Love Bug?
I don't know, but one of my favorite jokes from those movie series is there's this little Mexican boy that always calls Herbie Ocho. And finally, one of the characters goes, hey, kid, why are you calling him Ocho? He says, everyone knows five and three make eight.
Yeah, so, alright, Disney, shame on you for that, for that terrible joke.
So why does, why does Herbie have the number fifty-three on him?
Alright, alright, so I've got three interesting facts about Herbie the Love Bug, okay? The first one is that fifty-three is a reference to the producer of the movie, Bill Wash. That is his favorite baseball player. And that was, uh, Don Drysdale of the Dodgers, who coincidentally threw fifty-eight and two-thirds consecutive scoreless innings in nineteen sixty-eight.
Holy crap, they don't make them like, uh, Don Drysdale anymore.
Uh, I think they don't make bad batters anymore is probably what's more appropriate for that. But also, uh, the Love Bug was the last live-action film, uh, personally authorized for production by Walt Disney himself. And then the, the third one, which I love this to death. In the fourth film, yes, Ben, the fourth film.
I know, Josh, I watched them all.
Uh, the fourth film, Herbie Goes Bananas, which is ridiculous. Um, at some point, Herbie was on a boat and causing problems, and so they forced him to walk the plank.
Yeah, that if, if for some reason, they had a car-sized plank on this boat, you never questioned it.
Well, uh, so I've never seen the film, but presumably they filmed a VW Volkswagen bug being pushed off of a plank into the ocean off of a cruise ship. Is this, can you confirm this?
Yes, absolutely. He snuck aboard the cruise ship, that he was getting out of hand, so they made him walk the plank. And, and this is how you, it, in the hero's round, this is how Herbie basically goes low. He, he's eventually recovered out of the ocean, he's covered in rust, and he spits out, um, seaweed and, yeah.
Okay, well, here's the interesting fact about that whole scenario that I love to death. Is the production crew were never able to recover the Volkswagen bug that they dumped into the ocean.
Well, wouldn't that be a fine for a diver?
So yes, there is somewhere at the bottom of the ocean, a production-value Herbie Volkswagen bug. Perfectly fine, just shoved off the side of a boat.
Dude, you really took me back to my childhood there, holy crap. The reason that one's called Herbie Goes Bananas is because there's this scene where they, where Herbie is hiding in like a, um, I don't know, like a Jamaican, uh, parade or something, and they've covered him entirely in bananas. He still looks the shape of a Volkswagen Beetle, but he's covered entirely in bananas. The bad guys figure out it's him, and they come running, and he's parked on the airfield next to an airplane covered in bananas, and he opens his door, and the bananas fly off, hit the spinning propeller of the airplane, cover the ground in banana slush, and the bad guys slip around a lot. That's how low Disney got in the late seventies.
Uh, direct-to-VHS releases, nothing like them.
And I thought they were the greatest, because those are the movies my parents would let me watch.
Oh, you poor sheltered thing.
And I could tell you, yeah, he, he'll like, do you know there were four Herbie movies? Yes, Josh, I know there were four Herbie movies.
It's my bad, bringing a knife to a Herbie gunfight.
Yeah, alright, so we need to follow up on something from last time. Uh, you had mentioned how in our hundredth, uh, sorry, our hundredth hour of, of broadcast excellence, we had exceeded the runtime of several things we had no right exceeding, like for instance, all of the films of the Marvel Cinematic Universe. And, uh, I think it was like sixty-seven hours or something like that.
Something like that. We have it in the show notes.
Anyway, uh, I had brought up the question, well then, what's our next milestone? So how about the entirety of the Marvel Cinematic Universe to include all of the television properties? Now, there are some awful ones.
Agents of Shield comes to mind, which was good for a minute. Um, uh, uh, are we talking, how old-school are we going with these shows?
Okay, so Josh, you and I have stumbled into like where the biggest geeks of the geeks of the Marvel Cinematic fandom exist. You know, the, the comic book and TV series Venn diagram intersection, where it's, um, um, actually land, um, actually, so I found a Reddit thread where all those guys got together and hashed it out, and the number as of five months ago was three hundred forty-seven hours.
Oh, well, that's five months ago, like Disney's put another hundred hours in TV shows since then.
Um, so we'll say roughly three hundred fifty at this point. It's a race, I don't know if we'll ever catch up.
I doubt we'll ever catch up, just because, uh, there's only so many hours in the day, and we can't record on all of them.
Right, so it, it's a moving target, so, uh, we'll have to abandon that one as a potential target.
Disney, calling you out. You ever slow down production, the MCU, we're coming for you.
Alright, another interesting thing this week is, um, it was my daughter's eighteenth birthday, um, last week. And, uh, she's been a bit down. We just finished a move, she left her friends behind, she had to get a new job, she's facing real-world life. You know, getting like paltry paychecks where they take everything out in taxes and wanting a car that she can't afford and ha- whatever. It, it, she's, she's unhappy, so we were trying to cheer her up, we helped her decorate her new bedroom, and, you know, I got her like a Bluetooth speaker and some stuff, but we took her out to the movies. Um, and I realized there was a new movie out that was really targeting her age group and demographic, and it's called Free Guy. Have, have you seen the trailers for it?
I have seen the trailers, I've not seen Free Guy yet, but my wife and I are huge Ryan Reynolds fans, and I don't care how awful it looks on TV, I'm gonna go see it because I love Ryan Reynolds.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I enjoyed the third Blade movie because Ryan Reynolds was in it, or, or the gr- the awful, um, Green Lantern movie because Ry- Ryan Reynolds was in it. I'll, I'll enjoy anything with Ryan Reynolds.
Ryan Reynolds agreed to play Deadpool in the original, uh,
X-Men movie?
X-Men.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
And then, then they sewed his mouth shut. Hello?
Yeah, this is, uh, but Ryan Reynolds wanted that role because he's loved Deadpool so much for so long. And, uh, I don't, I, I love.
It's like hiring The Rock and not planning a scene where he takes his shirt off.
Or doing the people's elbow.
Yeah.
Or not the people's elbow, the eyebrow, sorry.
That's right, the, the, the smolder thing. He even does that when he's animated.
Yes, there was that terrible Mummy movie with Brendan Fraser where he was a CGI character, and they, they spent fifteen seconds of screen time to show a CGI rock doing his eyebrow.
I was thinking of Moana, but yes.
Oh crap, he did it in Moana two.
Yep, anyway.
Oh, jeez.
What, there's, there's one aspect of this movie-going experience I want to focus on, and that is a prediction I made on the podcast over a year ago about what the COVID pandemic was gonna do to the movie industry, and it is in shambles.
Oh, really?
It's in shambles. I mean, there, there's all of the streaming services that have finally caught up, and the movie industry hasn't decided that it's ready to transition to at-home consumption of first-run theatrical productions. Like, ha- have you heard about the Scarlett Johansson lawsuit?
How could I not? Disney is like ostracizing Scarlett Johansson for even daring to ask the question, why don't I get a cut of the the Disney Plus revenue?
Well, she's kind of represent, she, I think this, like the Screen Actors Guild or the Hollywood, you know, whatever, union picked her, uh, alright, we gotta pick one here to, to plant a, a flag in the sand and put up a fight. So this is gonna be it. Alright, you, you signed a contract, they promise you whatever box office receipts, but then Disney's get, making all their money off their streaming service, and that wasn't in your contract, and you're getting screwed.
Right, but, uh, presumably, these movies are, have a very long lead time for contract negotiations and signing before they go into filming and production.
Right.
So guaranteed, when she signed that contract, direct release to streaming was not even a thought in anybody's head.
Right, it, it, that paradigm had not yet shifted.
Right, so, and this is the thing, maybe she's the one that's gonna die on the hill, just so everybody going forward gets that clause in their contracts. Uh, but I, I get what you're saying, somebody had to be the one to take the stand.
Yeah, so I brought that up because my myself and my nineteen-year-old son and my eighteen-year-old daughter went to the movie theater, uh, you know, got soda and popcorn and stuff, and we had, we gotta go we were the only people in the place, so went right up to the counter, there were three people helping us with our concessions. You know, they, they were all asking us what we want and giving us our stuff, and then we walked down the deserted hallway to the deserted theater, and we picked the best seat in the house and had the whole place to ourself. And we did like we do when we watch a movie at home, where we just talk amongst ourselves, because there's no one else in the theater to interrupt.
Did they have to put out the trash can fire in the corner of the theater? Did they shoo all the raccoons out the emergency exit before it started?
It, it was surreal that we were on opening night of a first-run major Hollywood movie in the middle of the summer, and we were the only people there.
Well, and you see, Ben, here's the thing, what I realized with these first-run movies, they come to your TV in your house. A lot of people invested money during COVID to have a nice television and surround sound setup because they couldn't go to the movies, first of all. Second, if you wanna watch one of these movies, it's what, thirty bucks, and then you just get to watch it forever?
Yeah, I think we paid sixty bucks for going to the theater and, and, yeah.
Exactly.
Watch it once.
If I'm gonna take my family of four to the movie theaters, like, I'm, I'm immediately writing off like a hundred and twenty dollars in tickets and concessions.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, it, the economic trade-off is undeniable. It's, it's the same thing that was happening in the late nineties, early two thousands, where the music production industry wasn't ready to transition from physical media to, to digital media. They were digging their heels in, they're like, no, you still have to buy CDs.
And then Napster happened, and then they've kind of forced it to happen.
And if you look at a graph of profits, they really took a nosedive right when that transition was happening, before the industry basically had to face the facts of what had happened in the world around them, and I think the movie theater industry is gonna be going through that. There's gonna be a lot of closed, physical buildings, a lot of lost jobs until they normalize on the new paradigms.
There's gonna be, uh, anytime those transitions happen, there's gonna be the executives that dig their heels in that are risk averse and don't wanna change things. And there's gonna be some junior executives somewhere saying, hey, this is coming, and we need to do, make this change. But it's not gonna happen until you see those nosediving profits like you're talking about. So this, this might be it. Maybe all the movie theaters are thinking, oh, well, COVID's loosening up, everybody's gonna come rushing back because there's nothing like going to see a movie on the big screen, and then the rich family was the only people there.
And Disney, you know, invested a lot of money in producing this film, like you said, that was probably financed and planned before COVID hit. Uh, and they can't just hold it forever, assuming everything's gonna go back to normal, theaters will go back to their regular way and film production and consumption will go back to the way it was before. And they can make every bit of money that they plan to make, they gotta, they gotta face the facts and the changes to the world and, and find a way to still be profitable, or at least cover their expenses and not go belly up.
Uh, oh, definitely, and I'm curious to know what the profit splits are like at the, at the production end, like all the way back, because how much of the first-run movie take does the studio get versus the, the theaters? And then compare that to the split that they get from, uh, the direct-to-streaming. Because, uh, so you've got to assume that Disney's getting a much, much larger percentage of my thirty dollars from their streaming service than they are for my hundred and twenty dollars that I pay to Harkins.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's akin to the same kind of economic trade-offs I think you get when you like buy things on Amazon. Like, you still have to have it stored somewhere in a warehouse, but you're no longer paying for a cashier, and it's, it doesn't have to be merchandised on shelves, and you don't need retail space that you gotta heat and cool and, and have lighting for, it's just completely different economic equation.
You're right, that's a really good comparison, I think, the Amazon comparison. Just, uh, you're cutting out all the logistics and all of the, the middle managers of your movie-going experience.
Yeah. Anyway, that was part of it, the other part was the film itself, which, if you haven't seen the trailers for it, spoiler alert, uh, I'm not gonna spoil the whole thing, but the basic idea is that your main character is a non-player character in an online world that doesn't know he's a non-player character. And he, he's a teller at a bank, every day he gets up and he goes to the bank, and he gets robbed like six times, because the world he's in is supposed, they never say this, but it's supposed to be like Grand Theft Auto.
Yeah, you're, everybody's doing crimes and being the bad guys.
Right, so all the, all the players, uh, and they distinguish between the NPCs and the players by the players all wear sunglasses. So all the sunglass wearers are just doing whatever the heck they want, and the people that don't wear sunglasses are just going around, uh, along with their normal life.
Is that how they reference it in the film? It's like, oh, those sunglasses guys.
Yes, exactly. Now, the thing that's brilliant about this movie is there, there is a lot of, um, there's a lot of things that we haven't really discussed about the assumptions of these kinds of worlds that are worthy of de- delving into a bit. Like, the way a player behaves in a world like that is downright, you know, sociopathic.
Of course, there's no consequences for, you strip away all of the rules that you're, that, that subconsciously are crushing you all day, every day. You're at work with all these people you hate, but you have to be nice to them. Customers are rude to you, you're not allowed to be rude back to them, so you go home and you sit down and you log into a world that has none of those social stigmas, none of those societal contracts burning you down, so yeah, you turn into a freaking psycho. It's like, oh, like even if you try to be good, like, oh, that guy cut me off in traffic, next thing you know, you're pulling him out of the driver's side window and just beating the crap out of him.
Yeah, so, but it's a bit subversive in that it, while it's fond of the universe and that we've created with interactive storytelling, uh, it also is a bit of a send-up, and it's walking the line of being a parody as well as being kind of fond of its source material. And I li- I like how they did it, it ki- although it kind of reminded me of the Seinfeld finale. Are you familiar with the Seinfeld finale?
Uh, yes, very, everybody was super disappointed with the Seinfeld finale.
But I like the underlying idea of it, and that is, all along you've been enjoying this and laughing at us, but actually, these people are a bunch of psychos. And now they finally get what they deserve.
Oh, is that the lesson I was supposed to take away from the finale? I just thought it wasn't very funny.
Seinfeld finale.
I didn't take anything, I was, it was Seinfeld, I was expecting to laugh until it was over, but, but you're right, that was, that's a good lesson they're trying to impart. Holding up the, this, but that's the problem, when you hold up mirrors, to me, the viewer, Ben, I don't wanna see myself, I'm a terrible person.
That's why everyone was so mad, they just wanted more laughter, but it, I think they did something brilliant and subversive, and I think a landmark thing to really go, you know what, what are we doing here? Like, these aren't good people that we cre- characters we created.
I was not, uh, socially mature enough to appreciate that lesson at the time, I was just disappointed with the jokes.
I was a full-time missionary when it came out.
So you didn't even see it, ah, moving on.
No, 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 I did something really apostate, and I, it was such a big deal and such a big part of my life that I went over to a member's house and we watched it together. But I wasn't supposed to.
Wow, were your mission, like, I, I need to write a letter, like, people need to be aware of the sacrilege that happened.
Yeah, okay. So, speaking of cultural touchstones, oh, okay, there was one other thought I had about this, and that was film is a very kind of old medium for storytelling compared to the video games that it was using as its source material.
Okay, uh, talk, just comparing the two, the ages, yes, film is older than video games.
And it felt like, it felt like, almost like a milestone in the end of an era, where you had this old medium, and you're trying because when you go on and you play an online game like Grand Theft Auto, there's kind of a story going on and you're interacting, but mostly it, it just kind of gets lost in the slog. You know, it, it turns into sandbox playground, and it's, there's no plot. You can't just like drop in on the world and, and turn two hours of footage into a movie.
Uh, I mean, for that specific instance, video game, yes, but you might be, you might be out of your depth talking about this, because there are a lot of video games that have very cinematic-worthy.
I get it, you're talking about the single-player experiences, this was more about the multiplayer thing. And they, they laid on top of all of these ideas about online video games, interactive media and that kind of thing, uh, with a, a real plot, you know, with real human characters and real conflicts and that kind of stuff. A brilliant, uh, cameo, I wouldn't call it a cameo, a brilliant, um, antagonist played by Taika Waititi, um, the, but it felt like film struggling to stay relevant in the world of tomorrow. Like, it almost wasn't a good movie. And it was trying to take something that everyone now, probably their target audience is experiencing, and they might not be able to watch. Like, they might be bored or, or not interested in this film because they can go and interact with the world, they can go and be part of the story. And now they don't wanna see this old-style film that has a plot stapled onto it that isn't really as good as going to the world themselves.
That's, that's probably an apt, uh, observation, uh, traditionally, films based on video games have struggled for that exact reason. Is because by putting it down, it's almost like the, uh, the Schrodinger, uh, problem. Like, i- it could be anything until you observe it, and then it's locked into just one thing. So you, you, you have the, you take this universe, and everybody loves games for different reasons, and moves through them in different ways, and like finds their own path and tells their own story, and then, and that's part of the reason that they love that game so much. And then it gets locked into this film where it's somebody else's decisions and storyline that gets put down, and it's never as good as the one that you made for yourself.
Yeah, exactly, but it definitely wouldn't fit into two hours.
Well, yeah, that's true.
Okay, so a completely different media thing that happened this week that caught me utterly off-guard is was the Field of Dreams game. Did you hear about this, Josh?
No, I did not.
Okay, so some enterprising fans of the classic, uh, nineteen eighties or nineties film starring Kevin Costner and James Earl Jones, Field of Dreams, um, went and built this film, or, or have maintained this film from the, the field, from the film in the middle of Iowa.
Oh, okay, yeah, because they did, they made a baseball field in the middle of a cornfield in Iowa, in the middle of nowhere.
Right, the classic line from the movie is, if you build it, they will come.
Yes.
So it, it's become a, it, it's exceeded its humble beginnings, it's become a bit of a cultural touchstone. It, it symbolizes the sentimentality and attachment with the things of yesteryear.
The field or the movie?
The movie.
Okay, people, if you haven't watched Field of Dreams, go watch Field of Dreams, like, right now.
People love this movie and, and this idea of finding fulfillment or retribution or atonement because of your past through a dream. And so the idea is go, follow your dreams and, and something magical will happen.
Are you serious? Are you being serious right now, or are you just screaming?
Totally being serious, and I'm gonna lead up to where, what happened this year.
No, no, hang on a second, that's not like this.
Okay, what do you think that movie was about?
This movie is one hundred percent about faith, doing things on faith, not expecting a reward, and being rewarded at the end regardless.
I don't, I don't disagree with what you just said, but I don't think that's exclusive of what I said.
No, I, 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 I'm, I'm just, I'm just a little surprised, sir, that, that you were the one to pitch it that way, and I was the one to pitch it this way.
But it's definitely not about God. It's just about baseball.
It's about, it, no, it's, it's very, it's actually very little about baseball. It's very much about faith and doing things because you believe in it.
So Australian mathematician and journalist Brady Hiran, uh, from, um, the Hello Internet podcast, uh, he, this is his favorite film, and, and he's never even played baseball. I mean, that's how, that's how much of a touchstone this thing has become.
Because it's not about baseball, like, very little of it is about baseball, and everything you need to know about baseball is explained in the film.
Okay, so anyway, this field still exists in Iowa, but they've never played a major league game on it until this year.
They actually, so like, a professional team went out to this field in Iowa.
So they got the Chicago White Sox and the New York Yankees, and they dressed them up in old-timey movies. It looked like they were period accurate for, for the players that, that came, and then they, they filled the, the stands up with like four thousand fans, I think that was the full capacity, you know, like less than a tenth of a regular Major League Baseball stadium. And then they dim, they, they lit up the, the cornfield in the middle of Iowa, and the players came out of the corn onto the field. Ke- Kevin Costner at their head.
That's sweet.
And they played a game, and it went to being tied in the ninth inning, and there was a dramatic homerun to end the game, and it was, it was magical. I'll put, I'll put a link in the show notes to some highlights from this game, but it was like some guy at the Major League Baseball head office had a bright idea, and it w- went off better than they could have imagined, it was amazing.
That sounds amazing, that is really cool. Like, I don't even like the Field of Dreams all that much as a movie, it is an American classic, go see it if you haven't, but no, like, having seen the film, like, having, go out and, and seeing that in real life, that would be, that would, that would just be.
Yeah, can you imagine if you're one of those four thousand fans in the stands, and they hit the homerun, and it was, and, you know, and the players waltz off into the corn, and they fired the fireworks? Oh, man, it must have been great.
I, I'd pay more for those seats than I would for Super Bowl tickets.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, it was, it was worthy of that kind of attention, and, and it spiked real fast in the media, I'll put a link to a video about it.
Excellent.
Okay, I have a bad at hus- husbanding moment, Josh.
I have one too, I'll let you go first, we'll decide who's, we'll decide who's the worst husband at the end of the segment.
So we had a marriage milestone, and I didn't know how many of those there are still left to have after you've been married for twenty-two years. But I was in my bedroom, my wife was standing behind me looking in the mirror, and she said to me, with no sense of irony or self-awareness, would you still love me if I got fat? And my life flashed before my eyes, Josh.
Did you immediately figure out how many exits were around you and which one was the nearest?
Let's see, I could dive out the window and probably. Narrating my life, here the adult male is cornered by the female. You can see him tensing up and his blood pressure increasing as he looks for a way out.
That's the record-scratch moment, and your voice oversights like, yep, that's me, and this is how my life ended.
I, I, once, once I calmed down from all that and the adrenaline rush cooled off, I realized she just asked me that question without being ironic, like, she didn't even realize she was doing a stereotypical thing, she just legitimately asked me that question, and now I owe her an answer.
You haven't answered yet? Oh, no, you, oh, never, you're saying in that moment you thought that.
Yeah, this is, this is what was going on inside my head. So, Josh, now's your chance. It's not you.
I, I, this is another one of those things where, like, there's so many jokes, like, my immediate reaction to these kinds of lines, especially when they're super stereotypical like this one, is to say something smart-assy. Um, mostly to buy time so I can run the Nicole simulator, so I can figure out what the correct answer is. So like, there's so many jokes that they're getting stuck in the door again, um, so, um, why, are you planning on getting fat? Well, I don't know, how fat are you planning on getting? Like, you mean you're going to get fatter than this? Of course, I'll love you, but I can't speak for the kids.
Keep going, keep going.
Uh, yes, but please don't. Sure, but we'd probably sleep together less, um, probably, but there's no rush. Uh, uh, probably, but let's not push it. Uh, I don't, I, something about mother-in-law, I don't know, that one's not fully formed yet, I'll leave that one to simmer.
That was jumping in there.
Oh, okay, that's, huh, huh, so, yeah, that's what I've got. How did you respond, Ben?
Okay, so after I recovered from the fight or flight, and then the, um, I, I just rea- I'm like, honey, do you realize you just asked me that question? Like, I, I just, I couldn't help but step out of it. And she was like, yeah, I guess I did, but I kinda still wanna know. And I think I said, e- even though you were joking, I kinda, uh, I, I, I was like, yeah, but, you know, do, are, are, is that, are we gonna do that?
Well, are, how, what are we talking? We talking about like having an extra hot dog every other week, or are we talking about like, like fifty extra pounds by the end of summer?
Yeah, I, I don't think she could if she tried, but, yeah. It, it, it didn't end dramatically, I, I lived through the encounter. I just thought it was funny that we had an unironic, stereotypical marriage moment in twenty-two years.
I, I have, I have a canned answer that I give my wife, whenever she asks questions like that, in, in that realm of like, what are the outer limits of my, my affection for her? And my response to her is, sweetheart, if you wanna get rid of me, you're gonna have to kill me.
That's a great canned answer, and I can't use that one, especially since it's now recorded and my wife will listen to it, but I need to come up with one of my own. I'll let you know when I do.
Uh, please, I'd be very interested in that.
Alright, so what was your bad at husbanding moment?
Um, I, I don't know if this is bad at husbanding now, because yours, yours was legitimately bad at husbanding. Uh, mine is more of just like one of those marital things that happened that we recognized the other day. So, uh, my wife and I are both, um, yeah, we're both educated. Uh, we've both been to college, we both have our masters, she's getting her doctorate, she will always be one step ahead of me in formal education, but I'm just accepting that.
Okay.
But, so every once in a while, we'll have little spats about academic type of things, and this, this happened last week, and it was uh, this back and forth about grammar that we had. And so I asked her, or we were talking, or she was writing something, and I saw that she did not use an Oxford comma in a list of three things that she was writing in a sentence. And I was like, whoa, 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 you need a comma after the second.
She was writing for her doctorate, you were just glancing over her shoulder?
Yeah, because, you know, that's what you do. But it doesn't, like, seriously though, alright, so if you don't, if, for those of you who are not aware, the Oxford comma is a, is a quintessentially necessary piece of, of written English, where if you are listing three things, it's like, oh, I, or more, um, I bought a hat, I bought a rug, and I bought a chair. Like, if the Oxford comma is the comma that comes after the second to the, or like, the second to the last thing, so it'd be a rug, comma, a lamp, comma, and a chair.
Right, or the adult male panda eats, shoots, and leaves.
Yes, and that, this is why, thank you, that is a perfect example of why the Oxford comma is important. Because it can separate two things that otherwise could be read as being linked together in a way that's not correct.
Yes, so it's something that you use all the time because it matters sometimes.
Uh, but this is the thing, is that it's completely unnecessary, it's not required in to be radically perfect. It is, it is an optional thing, you do not have to use the Oxford comma when you're listing three things.
Uh, I don't know, she's in a doctor program, they, they probably say your papers must conform. Uh, I don't know. She's in a doctor program. They probably say your papers must conform to the Chicago Manual of Style or the APA Guide or something like that. And I think those actually give an opinion on the the Oxford comma.
So everything that I've seen is that the Oxford comma is optional in situations where you're just listing three things and the 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 misinterpretation isn't an issue. So ah now there was a lawsuit, like I looked this up, but for the sake of the argument, I don't have it like in my hip pocket, so I don't know the specifics, but there was a lawsuit of some um truck drivers who were suing a company because they left out an Oxford comma in the contract. And the the entire settlement of this overtime dispute with truck drivers came down to the interpretation of this sentence that did not have an Oxford comma. And like it's called the ten million dollar comma.
Wow, I mean, wow. But so but what was the relationship issue?
With oh, with us?
Okay, so you looked over her shoulder and said, aren't you gonna put a comma there?
Yes, it was like basically I kind of called her out like, hey, bad grammar, fix your bad grammar and felt a little superior about it because that's what you do. But then the next day I was writing an email and then she goes, what are you doing? I was like, I'm writing this date and she goes, you're writing the date wrong. What are you talking about? Like you wrote Au- August seventeenth with the little TH at the end. I'm like, yeah, August seventeenth and then the year. So they know what date I'm talking about. She goes, you don't put the TH in the date unless it's an ordinal number or a cardinal number. And I don't and I still don't remember which one's which. And I go, you're full of it. And I had to Google it and she was absolutely right. If you if you are writing a date, you like and you're using a month, day, year, or you just have, if you have the month specified, you do not use like the the seventeenth or the third, you don't use the TH.
You're blowing my mind here, Josh. I didn't know this one.
The only time you use those apparently is if you're doing it.
Actually ordinal.
If you're gonna say the sixteenth day of August, then you use little TH. But if you're just saying August sixteen, you just write sixteen and people read it as the sixteenth.
Okay. Wow. And I bet she got to feel very superior and put you back in your place as being behind of her in education.
Now, to be fair, in the relationship between me and my wife, uh, if I ever get out of my place, I'm not out of my place for very long.
Okay, but does she disagree with you on the Oxford comma? Let's get to the real issue here, Josh.
I am pro Oxford comma all the time. Uh, I in that she does. She is anti Oxford comma. She's not a fan of the Oxford comma. She doesn't use it unless it is absolutely necessary.
All right, I need to get her the panda shirt with the guns.
Yeah, well, in that sense, it would be necessary. Like this is the thing. She give you. If you tack that caveat onto it like, oh, I don't ever use the Oxford comma unless it's necessary. And it's like, well, then technically you're always.
Not the Oxford comma.
Yeah, then it's just the comma you use to say things correctly. That's not that's not fair. I use it all the time regardless because optional is better if you include it.
Yeah, it the the thing I can't quite fathom about this argument is what are we trying to save? Like ink? What? What's the cost of that extra comma?
Well, it it we could take another step back and talk about how any form of communication like language written or spoken is just a tool for me to encapsulate an idea that is multifaceted and ten dimensions wide and colorful and has flavors to it. And I've got to cram it into this tiny little box that is the English language and try to deliver it to you. So that way, when you unpack it, it is the same shape, flavor and color in your head that it is in mine and it never works right.
We've tried to rectify this a little bit with things like emojis.
Well, and that you're talking there that if um communication over a non-verbal means, because a ton of our communication is non-verbal. When I'm speaking to you, you and I, we can see each other and we've discovered that it's very important for our communication because facial expression and tone and body language, all of these carry and flavor and color the words that we are saying to each other. So when you're typing on a piece of paper, you don't have any of those tools. All you have is punctuation, capitalization, uh bold italicized, underlined, strike through, and then emojis. This is why emojis became such a predominant thing in society is because it adds that extra layer of complexity to otherwise blank communication.
Yeah, although we have our standard set of rules and then people invent new ones that I didn't know could exist. Like sometimes I'll be on a comment thread on Reddit and somebody will do something like, for instance, use the little superscript font uh for that's only used for ordinals, but they'll use that for text and it actually adds meaning that you couldn't have done any other way.
I I agree. I I whenever I see that, I always read it as one of those things like I'm saying this to you now, but then I'm saying this to myself over here.
Yeah, exactly. And it there really isn't another good way to do that.
I I'm all for it. Anything like that's that huh. This is where the debate comes in. I remember my English teacher in high school swearing up and down that English is an art and it should be preserved exactly as it is and held to this high standard of and I I just every time I would fight with her like, no, English is a tool. Whatever we need to do to communicate the ideas from one person to another, do it. If there is some non-standard thing that I can do that adds that extra layer of depth, complexity or flavor to what I am trying to get across to you, that becomes useful as a tool for communication.
I don't I don't think your teacher understood the meaning of the word art. Uh, if she thought it was a rigid set of rules that should never be broken.
Well, then she studied English at Oxford University in merry old Britain and only spoke the Queen's English to her class and held us to the highest standards of the language.
Movie back in the nineties called Finding Forrester starring Morgan Freeman, uh, not Morgan Freeman, Sean Connery, as he was getting a little bit long in the tooth, but it was a good one. It was about this young boy from the projects that was a really talented writer, uh, but he didn't want his friends to think he was smart because that wasn't cool. And he runs into um Sean Connery's character who's like this retired author who wrote the great novel, the great American novel or something like that. And it's him mentoring him and they have this scene where they're arguing about rules and grammar and stuff like that. I'll put a link to the scene in the on a YouTube video on the show notes. But one of the ones I remember arguing about when I was a kid that they talked about in this scene was whether or not you can begin a sentence with a a conjunction.
Like and?
Or but. And of course you can. If that's what you need to do.
People do it all the time.
Yeah, but I just had teachers that would argue that you should never do that. There were there were nevers and I don't think English has nevers.
Well, English has nevers, like it it never makes sense. Like that's that's the whole story of English. My kids are trying to learn spelling and it's infuriating for me as an adult to explain to them this hard and fast rule. Oh, if there is an E, it creates the long vowel sound for the previous vowel every time, except this time and this time and this time and this time. Okay, it's not a hard fast rule, but most of the time.
Yeah, well, and and spelling is only recent a recent convention. Like people used to just write down whatever got the idea crossed.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I I I've heard uh scholars that are especially that specialize in like the Middle Ages and stuff, finding these texts and nothing is standardized. Uh, a lot of the letters don't look the same. Uh, oh, apparently there was a transition at some point where my wife could speak more to this. I can't, but there was some transition like in the space of like a decade, people were saying like a bunch of words this way and then they changed to this way. Like the word knight, K N I G H T, before this this transition happened was actually pronounced Knigget in the language.
Like in Monty Python, the quest for the Holy Grail?
Yes, apparently they were saying it correctly for the period that they were filming.
Awesome. I'm also leaking that in the show notes. Okay, well, it sounds like we need to uh, we need to focus this fire and we'll have a grammar discussion in the future, but I'm 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 glad you also survived your bad at husbanding moment.
Oh, people, like if you aren't already glued to the edge of your seats by this episode, like we are spoiling an episode. We're gonna talk about grammar like just hold on.
All right, well, the uh, as as I introduced in the past, let's transition to the segment I I will now call Board Game Survivor. So when we moved to our new house, we had a whole bunch of board games. It's too many. We need to get rid of some. So my family systematically playing them all to see if they're good. So I got two more this for you this week.
Uh, before we go any further into this, I wanted to make a suggestion for Board Game Survivor. If this is gonna be a real thing in your household.
Yeah.
The losers must be burned like in a ceremony.
Oh, oh, yeah, ritual burning. I love it. Okay, yeah, definitely. Okay.
Terrible for the very wasteful, terrible for the environment, but must be done.
Okay, so I I'll keep a whole list so that people can refer to it. We I think we'll we'll add it to our website, bad at magic dot live. Um, so this week it was a game called Mouse and a game called Barbarossa. Mouse cannot be found anywhere on store shelves because it is a family custom game. But it is a coherent game with rules written down on a laminated sheet. Here's how Mouse works.
You made up a board game called Mouse.
Um, my cousins did and we helped refine it and on the current version we have it credits them and us for having built this game.
So that's a that's a an implicit copyright and trademark. So people don't be stealing the game Mouse from this description.
Uh, I don't. I don't care. You can do it. I'm gonna describe to you how to do it. Okay, so a at its heart, it's an interactive game where you sit in a circle with an indeterminate number of people. Because my cousins had eight kids, I think they needed more games in their house that could accommodate ten people. So ten is a reasonable amount of number. If you get beyond ten, it's too many. But it ten to down to three, I think, can play it. So three to ten players. What you do is you sit in a circle and you have a string that you're holding that's attached to something representing a mouse. It's like you're holding their tail. Uh, we've used little like ninety degree bends of PVC pipe, like one inch pipe. Uh, we've also you thi- this current version has like little couche balls that are like uh yarn, um starfish looking things. And it's tied to the string and you set them in a circle in the middle of the group. And then one player is holding a pie tin with an handle on it, like a handle off of like your dresser so that it's kind of a trap. And the trap is cocked and ready to go and then they roll dice. And based on a pre on a predetermined number of rules, whatever the value of the dice turns up, that determines if the the trap can be rightfully sprung. If one of the chosen values comes up and you drop the trap and catch the mice and they don't pull their mouse out in time, then they give you a token and we have poker chips. They give you a poker chip. If you drop the trap and their mouse got out in time, they don't owe you anything. If you drop the trap and you shouldn't have dropped the trap, then you pay a token to every player that didn't pull their mouse out.
I see. And how often do you rotate the trapper versus the mice?
You just roll three times and then you pass the dice and and the trap and then grab the next mouse.
Okay, is it two dice?
So it just goes around the circle.
Is it two dice or one dice?
It's two dice. What this does is, for instance, you 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 just use mathematical probability. So you start off like if anyone rolls a seven, then you do it. And there's that moment where like one dice turns to six and then the next dice looks like it's gonna fall on the one and you're not sure. Or it's the three and the four and you can't tell and you're still counting. And there's that moment where somebody panics and pulls their mouse out and it creates lots of just fun little moments of uncertainty.
I see because of the artificial tension of the situation of the um, you have to react quickly and everybody knows it. It makes the other parts of your brain that have to do even simple tasks start to break down.
Yes, and you can bluff to drop the trap and they'll panic and pull their mouse out and they owe you a chip.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
So it's just it's kind of fun and frantic and hectic. There you can create different win conditions, like you can play complete uh Hunger Games or just like you go until there's only one person with all the chips, but that takes forever. You can go until the first person drops out and then you count their chips and whoever has the most wins, whatever. It's very adaptable. It's very flexible. That one definitely stays.
Uh, you are aware that that is one hundred percent like Milton Bradley would be all over that. Like you need to patent trademark and and sell this thing.
Yeah, it's fun. It's a fun game. Okay, the other game is called Barbarossa. I don't know why it's called that. I didn't even bother to look it up. This one has a very specific number of players. It is for three or four players. And at its heart, it's supposed to be like uh the scene from The Hobbit where he's having the riddle battle with uh Bilbo and um Sméagol.
Okay.
Uh, you each of the four players is given a lump of clay and with that lump of clay, you're supposed to create two quote unquote riddles. They correspond to a word, a noun or an idea. Uh, it has to be specifically off. There could be something you could make out of clay. Here's the dilemma. In the end, all four players have created two things out of clay. So you'll have a circle with eight little blobs sitting in it that represent things. The way that the then you have a board with points and you go until you get the most points. And the way the points are portioned out is if you guess someone else's riddle, you get to move your token ahead. If they guess your riddle towards the beginning of the game, you lose points. Towards the middle of the game, you gain points and towards the end of the game, you lose points. So it's like you need to make your riddle hard enough that it isn't easy to guess, but not so hard that they can't guess it.
So you keep calling it a riddle, but like that's a complex idea to try to use two pieces of clay to demonstrate.
It's just a thing, like for instance, for instance, one of mine was pig. So you wanna do a pig, but you don't wanna make it obvious that it's a pig. So it kinda has to be like symbology and vague shapes. So that you could say, yeah, I guess that was a pig, but not like, oh, that's a pig.
This is one of those games that falls into that Pictionary problem where you're relying on.
It's as fun as the people.
Yeah, it's the skill set of the players that are gonna be the limiting factor. And if you have a wide range of skill sets in one playgroup, some people are gonna have a blast and some people are gonna hate it.
Well, the weird thing was when we played code names, we were having a terrible time because my kids were so worried to be wrong, but in this we were doing okay. So the interactive portion of the game is there's like three different ways that you can guess what it is. You can ask for a letter of the word and they have to write it on a piece of paper and pass it to you in secret and then you have a letter of it. Or you can ask a yes or no question and they have to either say yes, no, uh, maybe or answer it, no clear answer, one of those four things. And as long as you get yeses, you can eat keep asking questions, but you'd be surprised how hard it is to ask questions.
That's just twenty questions, man. I play that all the time.
It is, but if you fail, your turn ends and you move to the next person and then and then you get to hear other people's riddles and questions and stuff.
I don't like it. I don't like it. There's too much going on. There's too much dead time between rounds. There's too much time taken when you're making stuff out of clay.
So they thought of that. They 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 must have been reading Mark Rosewater's Ten Things Every Game Needs because they give you little tokens that you you can use to interrupt someone else's turn.
Huh, okay.
So you're sitting there, you're listening to them ask their questions or make their guesses and if you think you know, you can interrupt their turn and make a guess.
Ah, still, still, I I it sounds slow. How long is? How long did it make you take you to make a pig out of clay and did everybody have to watch you? Was there time pressure for you sculpting meticulously this little pig?
Uh, ye- everyone's busy making their own. They're not eavesdropping on each other. You're just sitting around doing stuff out of clay.
Hmm.
The game has a convention where like the first person to get both of their riddles done gets to go first. So there's an incentive to.
Ah, so based on the fact that you didn't look up why it's called Barbarossa, leads me to believe that this didn't make the Survivor cut.
It did. So both of these games made the Survivor cut.
Have you cut any games yet?
I don't think we're gonna cut any, but we'll we'll see.
What's the point of having a a a?
Survivor where everyone survives.
A Thunderdome style tournament where everybody gets a participation ribbon at the end. It's fine.
My wife adopts board games like, you know, set like crazy old old cat lady adopts cats.
That's fine. I don't know if you've ever seen this on the internet. There are people that are very proud of their collection of board games and display them prominently in their house.
But they aren't kept like, you know, look, we have a mint in the box, plastic still on copy of Monopoly from nineteen twenty seven. It's more like I found this sad old version of Scrabble at the thrift store and I now I'm trying to get together a a set of tiles from three different versions so I can have one complete game.
Ben Scrabble is only like twenty five dollars. Like, go buy a new Scrabble.
I know. Anyway, that's it for Board Game Survivor this week.
Uh, stay tuned for next week when Ben doesn't eliminate any more games from his collection.
It is time for Bad Logic. So this week is an odd week and so you are choosing a bias for us.
Wow, it's an odd week and I'm biased. So I'm odd and biased. Thanks, Ben. You're a good friend. I don't know if I've ever told you that. All right, so today I wanna talk about the belief bias. Cause this is a bias that plagues us all, not just me this time.
Man, does it ever.
If a conclusion supports your existing beliefs, you'll rationalize anything that supports it.
Oh, man, something happened about this this week, Josh.
This this is one of those biases that, one, everybody has and two, drives you absolutely crazy when other people do it and you are completely blind to yourself doing it.
Probably all of that is true, which is why I'm gonna talk about someone else and not myself.
All right, tell me about the belief bias in your life, Ben.
So I sent you something this week that is the leadership of my church did a press release where they basically encouraged members of the church to wear masks and get vaccinated.
Yes, I did see that notice that came out and it was it was a very soft notice. It was just kinda, hey, if you could, maybe think about it.
Yeah, but it was also very clear. It didn't. It didn't waffle. It wasn't like, maybe consider this. It was like, this helps do it.
Okay. Do you think that had a a a la- an actual impact on the population of people to go get it?
Uh, it it clarified some things people were speculating about because there's been a lot of uh, non-doctrinal dogma that has been thrown around amongst more conservative and politically oriented members of my church that fall in the group of people that like think they don't need to get vaccinated and those kinds of things that somehow that's associated with their faith in God rather than them just being weird.
I see. So because traditionally, like if I if I speak out of line, stop me. I see, so because traditionally, like if I if I speak out of line, stop me here, but because traditionally LDS. Faith kind of falls on a conservative side. Uh, of the political spectrum, people were misinterpreting the political message as a potentially religious one.
Exactly. Uh, a- a- and there's some nuance to that. I mean, like. Utah typically votes highest percent Republican of all the states in the Union, except for during the last election, they they. There was a significant amount of defectors because they don't like Donald Trump.
Defectors, like that's a, that's a loaded term, but we'll.
Yeah, and that's exactly what this is about. That's why the first, the first presidency normally doesn't, of the church doesn't normally have to get involved with this kinda thing. But they did because they were having problems inside the church. I don't know, they're getting angry letters or. They're hearing about conflicts that are happening on a local level where people, you know, over things like should or shouldn't we wear masks and should or shouldn't we get vaccinated? So they came out and were very clear and said, we are in favor of this. If the prophet is a, is a retired heart surgeon, you know, he.
Yeah, very, it sounds like very medically science oriented.
Yeah, he's like, hey, you know, we prayed for a miracle, this is the miracle. Like, we, there's doesn't need to be any confusion here. This is the thing that God helped provide for to help end this plague, so let's do it. And I ha- my wife and I have a few friends that are very much enraptured by the belief bias. And so we were both kinda taking bets on how some of our friends who are members of the church, who are very much against vaccination would react. To this release from the prophet. And it was exactly like it says on the card. If a conclusion supports your existing beliefs, you'll rationalize anything that supports it. And that's what happened.
This is, the belief bias, like all of these biases are bad. This one is particularly bad because. If the belief bias is too strong inside of you, what that means is that you will reject new information. In order to maintain your current ideas. And that's, that's exactly the opposite of what we should be doing as people. This goes back to that saying.
If you always wanna be right.
If you always wanna be right, you always have to be willing to change your mind.
Yep.
And so you, you have to be open, you have to listen, and if it doesn't. Support your current standing, or like if you think one thing and you start hearing evidence of the other side, instead of rejecting it out of hand, do a little bit more reading. Maybe some new information has come to light that you're not aware of. Maybe you should reconsider the belief that you have. It's a very hard thing to do because you're turning inward.
The internet has really facilitated people doubling down on the belief bias.
Uh, huh, the internet is is creating echo chambers of people that.
It fuels their desire to reinforce the thing they believe in.
Yes, and it it connects them with like minded people, so they can, this is what the echo chamber thing is, where you end up on these. Message boards or forums or news sites where everybody is saying the thing that reinforces your belief, whether it's right or not. And that gives you any, some kind of external justification for, no, 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 I'm right, the other side is incorrect. And that's what's leading to more tribalism, which we talked about in the last episode, which is going to destroy the planet.
Yeah, alright, well, I I try, I I try to combat this one in my own life, Josh, I really do. I try, I try not to be closed minded in a way where I would reject new invalid information because I just wanna reinforce my own beliefs. Like he said, everyone falls prey to it.
Eh eh, everyone does, and i- it's, it's very hard, especially when like i- i- in a, in a. A combative scenario where you're in an argument with another person that is of the opposite mindset. When they present you with like clear, good logic for an argument that they have and. You just are in the position where you have to just kinda swallow down and realize that. Yeah, that they might be right in this, this way, and it just goes against the grain of who you are, but you have to do it.
I think this podcast is a good example of being able to do that. I think we have on recording, on the record. Times on this podcast where you and I have both changed our mind about things. In the last episode alone, we talked about like three of those. For instance, you had a poor opinion of the central conflict of the movie Children of Men. And I pointed out to you why that was, and I remember distinctly in the podcast, you going, you know what? I hadn't considered it that way. You changed my mind about this.
Now, granted, those are very low stakes. I I like to think that we'd also be able to to do a one eighty on something more important than than the the meaning of a film.
Well, you and I both talked about our, the transformation of our opinion over time of the arguments surrounding climate change.
Okay, yes, we did.
And again, that's about changing your mind about something important.
There you go. Ben and Josh con- condone changing your mind about things.
Alright, it's time for Bad English.
Uh, what do you got for us this time?
The phrase I've chosen this week is one that you may have heard before. It is know your onions or no one's onions. Do you know what that means?
It just sounds like, eh eh, again, it sounds like the, the, the proper English version of this would be know your. And it starts, it's a, it's a four letter word that starts with S, uh, it's for poop, know your poop.
Yeah, yeah, we have lots of different versions of it. Uh, this one, know your onions is one I heard in in Britain a lot. And just like any of these, they have lots of different versions and usages and it's, it's transformed and molded to whatever situation you're in. That guy really knows his onions, so I don't want to give the briefing on this topic till I really know, know my onions about it. The, the underlying idea is to be very knowledgeable about something. I guess they're kind of refraining the idea that you're a farmer and there's like a dozen different varieties of onions and you can tell by looking at their tops, which is which. Or know which kind is best to cook in a particular dish or something like that, but the idea is just be really good at knowing something.
So two things, one, I think farmers would be far more concerned with the growing properties and like what kind of soil and atmosphere and. Conditions that an onion would grow in versus how it cooks. I don't think they care, so that's just farmers just wanna eat.
I couldn't find anything definitive about the answer to that, like if it's talking about farmers or cooks or what.
The second one I wanna point out is I'm noticing a trend in a lot of these English phrases that you like. It's because they're all very G rated versions of R rated versions of sayings and idioms we already have. Do you just not, like, you just needed a G version of R rated idioms? Like you weren't allowed to say know your poop because of your particular personal beliefs. And this gives you a way of saying that in a way that sounds proper.
Well, also a lot of these I encountered in a professional setting and so there. The usage was G rated on purpose because they were using the professional usage of these kinds of things.
I mean, just because it's in a professional setting doesn't by default make it professional, but I get what you're saying.
Yeah. Um, now this one had an interesting etymology in that the earliest found written usage of no one's onions that they could find. Actually was in an American publication, Harper's Bazaar back in nineteen twenty two. Uh, and they also mentioned some other versions of it, like to no one's oats, to no one's oil, to no one's apples, to no one's eggs. Or even to no one's sweet potatoes. So the Italians have a saying that says, know, know your chickens.
The, this is, this is why, because there was sixteen different versions, that's why it boiled down to know your poop, because. The, the, the R rated word that we can't say is we don't wanna get demonetized, that encompasses all of these random things.
Okay, well then, that kinda shortcuts the question I was gonna ask you, Josh, which is if we wanna have one now, what is it? What's a good modern updating where we're not agriculturally oriented and we're talking about chickens and sweet potatoes and onions?
Uh, I've been saying it this whole time without actually saying it, poop, know your poop.
Come on, be more creative. What would it be? It'd be know your wifi?
Know your tech?
Yeah.
No, 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 I don't, man, I don't know, like just name something like a fancy computer-y. Like, uh, know your ESRB ratings. Know, know your Venmo accounts, like.
Know your comic book references.
Anything that we say is gonna become immediately dated, but my friend poop is forever.
Alright, that's a good place to stop. Let's transition to our main segment today. Now, Josh, I have a shaggy dog tail. I do this from time to time. I appreciate your indulgence in this, but I wanna tell you the story of Ben versus the Board of Education.
Okay, people, so Ben's gonna talk about something that eh, he, like he says, he does this from time to time. And this is where I get to sit back and eat popcorn and just heckle from the audience. And like boo at the parts where you're supposed to boo and then cheer at the parts that you're supposed to cheer, gasp when it's appropriate for, for the story. So this is really gonna be um, all on, Ben, this is on you, buddy.
Well, well done with the fourth wall break.
Well, the, the other thing I was gonna say is, I mean, we have to do it. Probably there's gonna be spoilers for Star Wars at some point, so just be aware.
Okay, so I need to lay some groundwork first. Uh, the first thing you need to know about me is that I have six children. All within the span of about ten years, which is really important because in the middle of my military career, where we're moving around from place to place to place. We just have this constant looming, ever-present dilemma of the problem of. Continuing, providing those six children with a continuous educational experience.
Oh, but Ben, we have this wonderful public school system where it has a standardized. Educational track and they should seamlessly move from one grade to the next regardless of geographic disposition.
Uh, I, if you're talking about the Common Core curriculum, that's still, my, my story predates that and and it's a little bit irrelevant.
Listen, this is my fault. I didn't layer that with nearly the amount of sarcasm that it deserves. Like, the education system is so freaking broken in this country that going from one, one county within a state to another can. Dramatically alter the, the, the level of education that you get.
So in twenty eleven, uh, we had taken our third consecutive assignment in the United States of America. And my kids were just starting to get old enough that they were starting to get into grade school. It's relatively easy to move your kids from one grade school to another, especially within the United States. I know you're being sarcastic about it, but it wasn't too hard. Then I accepted an assignment to go to Italy and not just to go to Italy, but to go to a remote base that wasn't an American base in Italy. I would be basically a tenant unit on an Italian base, which meant that my kids would either have to travel one way, an hour and a half every day to get to. Uh, DOD education school or go to an Italian school.
Which presumably wouldn't speak English, doesn't conform to any educational standards that your kids had previously been subject to. And who knows, like, maybe they'd roll in and be two years ahead or two years behind of what the curriculum was supposed to be.
Right. Now, this is one of those experiences you have in life, uh, as a parent, as a spouse, as a human, where you. Think you understand all of the rules and stuff and it's just not possible. Like you, there's no way you or anyone else out there could really know the magnitude of the decision you're making. You'll find out at some point in the future, look back at what you knew when you made the decision and be like, oh, that poor child.
Well, kids, your life is gonna suck in one, in one very dramatic way or another, so. My decision is figuring out which way I want your life to suck for the next two years.
But we thought we were trying to do something wise. Ultimately, instead of having them spend three hours a day on a bus to get to an American school filled with American kids. We decided to have them spend twenty min- thirty minutes a day on a bus to go to Verona. The Verona as in the story where this Romeo and Juliet takes place. Beautiful.
As in my Verona?
Italian city, city, yes. Uh, where, and where there's a lot of rich Italians who sent their kids to an international baccalaureate school that taught, that educated the children in English. So we assumed that would be okay. In, in practice, it actually turned out to maybe forty percent in English. So my kids were going to this Italian school every day and like for instance, my sons were being instructed in the German language. By someone that didn't speak English.
That, that, I could see that being frustrating, like having three language barriers to work through.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm teaching you German by speaking Italian to you. Good luck, kid.
As a complete tangent, um, my Russian instructor at the academy. Uh, was from Africa, grew up speaking his tribal language, went to school and learned French, cause that's the language they learn when they go to school. Then went to Germany and taught himself German so he could go to college there. Then taught himself English while he was getting his degree in Russian in Britain and then moved to the United States and was learning Spanish. While he was teaching his class. He, he, he couldn't finish a sentence in less than three languages. It was inferior.
That's awesome.
Awesome for him, terrible for me.
That reminds me of a joke I heard them tell once in Italy. What do you call someone that speaks only one language?
American?
Yes.
Proud of it, baby. Screw you and your other languages.
School was charming. It was beautiful. It was, you know, in three hundred year old buildings. And when we got there, they, they, we saw these children filing around in these very fussy standardized uniforms looking. Ha- fashionable and then. Uh, on the school tour, they talked a little bit about the education and the longest place they spent was they took us to the cafeteria. And explained to us how good the food was gonna be. And my children, every day in Italy, would be ushered into this cafeteria where they would sit at a small round table. And waiters would come out and bring them a pasta course, a meat course, a bread course and some kind of fresh fruit. Meanwhile, filling their cups up with pitchers of water.
Uh, excuse me, can we spend like some of this budget on education? Like, that'd be great.
And they told it to us in a way where it's obviously very important to them. Okay, so that was Italian schools. But my kids were kinda young. My oldest, I think, was like eighth grade age when we left Italy. So a- again, still, it was pretty flexible and my wife and I really were of the opinion that the. Educational experience they're gonna have won't just be the exact equivalent of what their peers in America will get, but they'll be getting a lot of intangibles that you can't measure.
Yeah, that's be clear, like elementary school level education, like even up through high school. Like, it's way more about developing as a person and socially than it is about the lessons that you're actually gonna take away from it.
Yes, and if that's all it was, we wouldn't have had any problems whatsoever, but you still need a diploma and college admission when it's over. So you kinda gotta keep that in the back of your mind.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I guess that's true.
Okay, so then after Italy, we took an assignment in England and again, we weren't being assigned to an American base, we were assigned to a British base. And this one was for three years instead of two, so we, now we're gonna have five consecutive years in Europe. Two in Italian, in Italian schools and three in British public schools.
That's a lot of non-standard Oconus schooling.
Yes, again, we didn't make this decision upfront and be like, alright, we're gonna give our kids this chaotic life right in the mid- you know, this chaotic existence, right in the middle of their formative years. So that when we ev- eventually come back to the States, it's just gonna be a nightmare.
If your life was converted into a sitcom, every episode would take place in a different country.
Now, I had an epiphany, I did not know that, that's what an epiphany is. Uh, uh, regarding the Harry Potter series and that is all of the nonsense about Gryffindor, Hufflepuff, Slytherin and Ravenclaw. Wasn't something she made up. Like, we got our kids to England, we enrolled them in English public schools and they had to get, they belonged to houses. That, that were, like, I think one of my kids were eagles and another one were swallows or whatever. They, at the elementary school, it was birdhouses and they had colors and they had meetings, there was prefects, there was head boys and head girls. It was all this stuff Harry, in the Harry Potter universe, came straight out of J K Rowling's childhood in, in British schools.
Yeah, uh, we as Americans are floored by how interesting and foreign and exotic the school system is, but that's, that's just school over there.
Yeah. Anyway, the. So, so when we got back to the States, we were looking at our kids and kind of taking tally of what we'd done. There was all the intangibles you can't really measure, and then there was some cute things, like the fact that if you hand my children a handful of, of US money, they can't count it. They just look at it and they're like, I don't know what that is.
Your, your kids, like ser- to this day, I'm sure they have.
Yeah, like, like, they, they still can't tell the difference between a dime, a penny, penny and a nickel, like they, they just, they're mystified by it.
Well, to be fair, I don't think at this point I could tell the difference between a dime, a penny and a nickel, because when's the last time I had actual cash in my hand?
They're like, why is this one worth a lot more than this one and this one's bigger?
Well, because this one's silver and that one's copper, you rude.
No, no, the nickel dime problem, but yeah.
I, I'm, I, I, I don't care for cash.
A- anyway, uh, they also didn't like know the states and their capitals. They, they, they have a very European history on things like. World War Two.
Like, Ben, who, who does know all the states and capitals? You have to learn that twice when you're in elementary school and everybody forgets it.
Okay, I get that you think that you forgot it, but having learned it and forgot it is way different than never having learned it at all.
But how applicable or important is it to you in your daily life?
It just comes up every now and then and you get like this weird look, like they don't know what two states border each other or something like that.
Uh, who cares? Like, all of this is information that is not supposed to be in your head. It's supposed to be Google-able on your phone.
I like that you said that because we thought it didn't matter, but it's gonna matter.
Spoilers.
Okay, so that, that kind of foreshadowed this, but when we went to the schools in England and said, could you drop um. Transcripts for our children so we can bring them back to the States. We got nothing but blacks, blank stares.
What are transcripts?
Yes, what are transcripts? Here's why. At the time, my children were seventeen, fifteen, thirteen, eleven, nine and seven. All the odd numbers.
Okay.
Uh. Which meant that my eldest was just about to be between his junior and senior years in high school, which is a really critical time for all these kinds of things. In England, back in the nineties, they changed a system that was similar, but to a new one they called GCSE. General Certificate of Secondary Education. The paradigm of GCSE is that. When you are about ninth grade level, you're gonna pick. Six subjects or so that you're gonna study for the next two to three years that are gonna prepare you for what you wanna be. And so you're gonna pick them now and then we're gonna teach you in those things for the next three years and then you're gonna take a standardized test at the end of it and we'll give you a certificate.
Okay, so not like a diploma, but um, it sounds almost like a GED type of situation.
Yes, but it's individual GED. You get a GCSE for math, you get a GCSE for English, you get a GCSE for music or science or whatever and you. So each one is its own diploma and it has a nationwide standardized test at the end of it. And what that means is, if you go from one school to another school in the UK, they don't care if you have a transcript. Just tell them what GCSEs you rolled, you're enrolled in, they'll put you in the appropriate classes and you'll continue being educated. They don't look at your teachers as like someone that's teaching you and grading you. They're just like a facilitator to help prepare you for the standardized test at the end of all this.
I see, so the state defines the test that needs to be passed and then you can pick, it sounds like you get picked multiples where you get a handful of them or whatever.
Yes, and, and it's designed to be two years worth of coursework.
Oh, so it's high school à la carte?
Yes, high school à la carte, but eh, there's a really critical thing. Imagine like you have two. Yes. High school à la carte, but there's a really critical thing. Imagine like you have two boxes. One's the British education box and one's the American education box. And for the British education box, you just pour into it until it's full and at the end you check it and then you give it a grade.
Okay.
And, and in the American one, they say, here's the box. You have to fill it with six boxes and each of those six boxes has to be filled with three boxes and we're gonna check every single box. And we're gonna count up numbers for each box and we're gonna average them out and all along you're getting a GPA.
Got it. You're talking about the, the fact that you have to have so many credits in history, so many credits in English, so many credits in math to round out the transcript that you need to say that, yes, yea verily, I got a secondary education.
Yes. So if you go while you're in the middle of these things and you haven't taken the standardized test yet, the British don't have, there's no grades to transfer. There's no transcript to be had. You haven't taken the test yet and you can't, cause you still need a full, another full year of instruction before you'll be ready. And these are hard tests.
The system is not built for people that fall off the treadmill before the race is done.
Yes. And the, these things are designed to generate results in a standard distribution.
Oh, oh, oh.
They used to give them letter grades, but they just recently transformed to being grades nine, one through nine. And if you look at the results, there's socioeconomic things involved, but you, the results come out in a standard distribution. Most kids get a four or a five.
Okay. And there's no negative connotation to that. Like when you're talking about applying to university or things.
No, i- 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 they're failing grade, even if you get the lowest possible grade, it's still considered like a, a D is on an American grading system.
Okay. So lowest possible grade, you still pass. You just got the, it's not about passing or failing. It's about how well you did compared to your peers.
Yeah. And it just shows completion, like you did it. Here's the thing. My oldest son, Michael, and I, uh, there's so much. My oldest son, Michael, had taken his exams just before we left England, but they, because the whole country takes them all at the same time, they go to like a central adjudicated place and their system is, is built around accommodating this. They're not in a hurry to get the results. They know when they're gonna come. It takes like two months. And then we also had the fact that we were across an ocean, which meant that they had to arrive at the school and they had to be like, oh, these are for kids that have left. And then, and since we were in England to get them, then we had to have someone over there send them to us. So when we arrived in the station, tried to enroll our kids in school, at least for high school aged kids, they didn't have transcripts.
So as far as the American education system is concerned, your kids haven't been to school.
Right. Exactly. And, and because we trust but verify, or no, don't trust and verify, they were they, there are a lot of rules in place to protect military children from this kind of thing, where they're supposed to assume good faith. Like your kids were in school, they were learning, let's try to get them enrolled so that they will graduate on time, be able to participate in any extracurriculars and not have to be beat up with lots of like prerequisites and stuff. And treat, you know, like a, a, a senior in high school, like he's a brand new arriving freshman.
Okay. That's what's supposed to happen. And then the fact that you use those words makes it seem like that's not what happened.
Okay. So that was all the groundwork. So when we arrived in the States, we had gotten the schools to produce something that just gave like a few descriptions of the classes they were in and stuff, but really when we got here and went to our local high school and handed them what wasn't anything like what they were expecting, uh, we hoped they would act in good faith and just let the boys enroll in classes and continue their education. And for the most part, they did. However, we didn't realize that they were really waiting for these certificates to arrive. So they could have their final validation that what had to happen had happened. So they let them enroll in like honors classes and, and you know, physics and calculus and science and computer science and all that stuff as if they'd been at school and done all the prerequisites up to that point. No problems there. They, they, they just took our word on it. And I was impressed with that.
And, and how did they perform? Like with they, it's not like they were idiots and didn't know anything that they were supposed to know. They, they, I'm presuming that they did all the stuff that they were asked to do.
They did fine. There was a few things we didn't expect. You know, like for instance, in America, we do geometry before we do trigonometry. And in England, they do it the other way around. So you'd, you'd be in a class and they would have something that they'd assumed they'd learned the year before, but they hadn't actually learned yet, but they'd already learned the next thing. And there was a little bit of friction with that kind of stuff.
Some sequencing things in specific. Okay.
But the Illinois state graduation requirements are like you said, you know, you need four years of English, three years of math, two years of science, two years of social studies, some art, music, foreign language, vocational stuff and some civics and P E all along.
Who gets to pick this stuff? And why is cursive still on this list?
Oh, it, it's just laws and rules and stuff. Anyway, this system is like we talk about in the I T, um, community. It's a system that's designed to fail close instead of fail open.
Yes. That means if somebody doesn't check all the boxes, they get stopped. They're not allowed through. They get checked.
Yes, exactly. You know, if we have a firewall that's protecting our network and the firewall goes down, we don't want it to just allow all the traffic through. We want it to stop functioning altogether and prevent all traffic rather than allowing everything through. And that's kind of the assumption here with this registrar at this school. Yes, we're letting your sons come in and roll in classes, but until we've verified that they've filled every single one of these boxes that they have to fill to graduate, they're not gonna be allowed to graduate.
Uh, which is kind of a weird ultimatum to get at the beginning of the semester, but okay.
Now, they have a little bit of local authority where they can kinda say like, oh, I can see here this math class is supposed to be the equivalent of this one, even though the British call it maths instead of math or whatever, but it's roughly the same thing. And they could, and we could look it up online or get an email answer from the school and they could say, oh, it says you have to have studied this, this and this. Okay. I can see they're there. It looks like they did it for this amount of time. And that was going okay. Um, however, they were still waiting for the certificates to arrive. And I think they assumed that the certificates were gonna say some things that ultimately they didn't. The first sign of trouble happened a- a- about halfway through the first semester, October, twenty seventeen. The counselor calls me one day and says, Mr. Rich, Michael needs to drop computer science and take physical education.
Um, no, that seems like.
Exactly what I said.
I mean, of the two things that are gonna be important for my son to learn, uh, computer science is gonna be, uh, like light years more practically applicable than physical education.
I was astounded that they even, I thought they were joking for a second. Like this is a joke, right? No, we're serious.
How bored are you at the office? Did you gotta call me as a practical joke?
We've been looking at the sorry excuse for what you sent us. There's Michael's transcripts and he needs to, uh, drop computer science and take physical education. And I said, uh, that's not happening. Who do I need to talk to to prevent it? And they're like, you can't, you have to do it. I'm like, uh, okay, who's your boss? At this school, the way it's organized, the principal doesn't deal with parents. He's almost like a dean of students and, and there's a superintendent and they're the ones that deal with parents.
Okay.
So I, I made a point with the superintendent and we came in to talk to her. And before I went in, Alicia and I did some research. And I found out that in the Illinois state code specifically regarding seniors in their senior year, the local principal has the authority to waive P E credit if they need to take other classes for academic reasons.
Oh, man. That's it. You, you're walking into this meeting with the loaded gun.
So I walked into this meeting with this loaded gun and we sat down and she starts reading us the riot act about how, you know, we didn't have the proper transcripts and they're doing the best they can. They're working extra hours to accommodate us, blah, blah, poor pitiful me. Michael needs to drop P E.
Like that, that's such, like, that's it. This is, you're just. My hackles are raised now because this is just such a ridiculous, like bureaucracy, trying to justify its own existence type moment. It's like, you came into this room prepared to beat me into submission rather than listen to any level of discussion that we're gonna have about this specific top subject.
Oh, you nailed it. That's exactly what was happening.
You have absolutely no, no desire to help me or my family in this situation. All you care about is your boxes aren't checked and I need to fit in the hole and I, I need to stop being that triangle peg that won't go into the circle hole. Like.
Yeah. Now, now part of me is trying to understand the logic of this. Like I'd like to think these are educational professionals that are really looking out for the good of the student. Like what's in it for them to make a senior who's getting A's and B's in all of his classes, drop computer science and take physical education?
Whoa, 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 hang on a second.
Are they worried he's gonna die in his thirties of heart disease?
Hang on a second. You went into a conversation expecting the other people to try to do the right thing? Look at you, you naive bastard, you.
Ah, that will become a theme. Okay. So I had this law in my pocket. I printed out a copy of it and I pulled it out and I'd highlighted the relevant section and I handed it to the superintendent. Now, I'm, I, I'm relatively high on the social intelligence scale and I can immediately tell that I had shown her something that told her that she had authority to do something that she wasn't aware of. And she wanted to check it out. Like it was a, it was a bit of an ambush. Maybe I should have emailed it to her in advance or something. I don't know. But she was reluctant and she wasn't gonna agree i- in the meeting. So I called it into the meeting. We left. Within a day, she'd sent me an email and says, okay, I can see here. I have the authority to do this. I'm waiving Michael's P E credit and everything looked fine.
Oh, well, good. Okay. So there you go. That's a win.
I thought it was okay. I thought like, oh, she, you know, she saw the light, saw she had the authority. I helped her understand what her authority was. She did the right thing. Everything's good. In actuality, what happened after we left the room was probably, alright guys, they pulled one over on us this time, but it's never gonna happen again.
I, I, that, uh, that, alright, so this is the part where yes, you are usually the one that has more faith in me than I do. I like to think that it's usually ignorance over malice. Like you would have had to really make them upset to, to like militarize or mobilize them against you.
We were not at all confrontational. We were just firm in looking out for the rights of our child.
Do you know who my son is? My son was head boy in Pangolin House in Yarddale. How dare you say he has to take P E?
That would have been awesome. Okay. Fast forward four months. Finally, the certificates arrived from England and we immediately take them down to the high school and turn them into the registrar. She goes, oh, great. Thank you. We can just finish the documentation. Everything's fine. He's already finished his first semester. That's in the books. He's halfway through his second semester in his senior year of high school.
Here's the problem is that these papers from England said, uh, yeah, he went to school for a while. Like, why are we writing this down? Signed the dean.
Like for instance, his G C S E for English just says he took English for two years. What it doesn't say is that it consisted of a very rigorous mix of writing and reading in the Queen's English. Like it was, these two years of English were the equivalent of four years in any American school.
Oh, and you know, I, I can see this train coming down the tunnel at you. And the problem is you gave them a document that doesn't perfectly fit into their, in, into their pre-built curriculum. And, and because you caused them a bit of, uh, of an embarrassing show in the first semester, they have zero desire to flex in order to help you out in this scenario.
You nailed it. You nailed it. So what I feel, I, I, I'll save that for the lessons learned. So the registrar got these certificates. She did her math. I don't think they were being deliberately dishonest about any of it, but the documentation didn't readily support the conclusion we thought they should draw. And I think common sense says they should draw, cause what they were proposing to us, the opposite is that your child was in school for the last three years, but what he did in England wasn't as good as what we do here in America. So you're gonna need to do more.
Okay. Now I'm gonna take the devil's advocate and take the opposite position because, just to grind your gears, cause I'm a fan. Like because public education is such a, a hot button issue in America, many states, I, I know there's federal requirements. I know there's state requirements for specific educational things. Like written into the law, kids must have X of this, Y of that and Z of this in order to graduate. So if the documentation that you're presenting doesn't immediately satisfy the legal and code requirements that they, that they as educators and administrators are forced to uphold, that can open the door to all these other people, all these other stupid arguments like, oh, well, my kid took a summer school course that was free on YouTube. Why should I have to do this class? You let, you know, freaking Major Rich let his kid graduate and all he did was, uh, go to potions and defense against the dark arts class.
That was fantastic, Josh. Very good devil's advocate and very good use of the slippery slope argument. Uh, logical faucy. Yes. That's exactly what was going on. It just wasn't readily apparent in the documentation we provided and they went into panic mode. Because they were going on the assumption that the paperwork was just gonna be an easy translation. They would check the boxes and he would graduate on time with his peers in May. It's the first of March. So they call us up and they say, um, not only do these documents say what you led us to believe they would and we're mad at you about that, but Michael will not be graduating in May unless he completes another three full semester long courses. The equivalent of a hundred and thirty-five hours of classwork. He can do them online on this website or he can enroll in summer school. Which would you like to do?
Oh buddy, them's fighting words. Don't be.
Oh my gosh, are they ever?
Don't be using words like never and will and shall and won't, like with, on a conversation with me, sir. Oh no, that's not how this works.
They'd made up, they didn't call it. I mean, there was a little bit of like, hey, are you sure we got all the certificates? And does this really say what we think it says? But then they went in the back room and said, alright, tell them they have to do a full year's worth of English and it, and a full semester worth of some other elective. They, we've done everything. We've, we've squeezed all the juice we can out of this turnip of the poor transcripts you sent us.
And again, devil's advocate, like it's not their job to justify his education. It's your job.
You would think so, but actually it's theirs. Here's, here's what happened. Okay. So I wanna read an article. So in twenty fourteen, the state of Illinois passed the Educational Opportunity for Military Children Act. It was signed in a big ceremony at Mascuta High School, which is right near Scott Air Force Base. It's the next school district over from us. Because Scott Air Force Base is the largest military installation in the state of Illinois. And the legislature had finally gotten on board with a wave of what had happened, probably post September eleventh of patriotism, where the states all got together and says, we need to stop making life so hard on military children. It's not their fault that their parents are fighting to defend our lives and freedom.
True, true statement.
So, so they stood up things like the Military Interstate Children's Compact that, that is an advocacy organization that all fifty states now belong to. Illinois was the forty-sixth state to join when they did this in twenty fourteen. Uh, thank God for Mississippi. And they, um, so, so when this came out, here's a, here's an article, uh, here's a quote from an article published by one of the newspapers in Illinois. On average, children of military families will enroll in six to nine different school systems between kindergarten and twelfth grade and will transfer three times more than non-military families. Once arriving in a new post, families are met with seemingly reasonable state and local regulations meant to support quality education standards, which unintentionally deny military children access to appropriate grade levels, course and program placement and extracurricular activities. The barriers unfairly penalize military families following orders to relocate. They cause military children to be treated as outsiders, derail college plans and often prompt military parents to search for more receptive school districts.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, all of those things, because our freaking little fifty different fiefdoms of education systems don't like to talk or standardize amongst each other, it causes all these problems.
So when Michael arrived in Illinois and his peers were planning like these lazy, half, half day class schedules and going to like, you know, leaving early in the afternoon, his schedule was packed with the full course load both semesters of his senior year. Because they were trying to check all their boxes that they couldn't get from the transcripts that we'd given them.
Okay.
So she comes to us and tells us he needs another hundred and thirty-five hours worth of classwork in March, when he's supposed to be graduating in May.
Did you laugh in her face? Did you laugh in their face?
She said no, hard, and so did we. So I'm like, alright, you know, it's time to go to mattresses. Like, wh- what do we gotta do here to appeal? So we start going back and forth with her over their interpretation of the G C S E certificates, of the curriculum standards of the UK and stuff like that, and we're just not making any ground. She is determined. Her name is Dr. Darcy Benway. More on her later. But man, she would, she had already made up her mind. Her, she was backing up her registrar and they were not gonna move another inch. They decided we were gonna do these three classes or bust.
Well, what was her name again?
Darcy Benway. Doctor.
Oh, Doc, Dr. Benway, we're calling you out on this podcast. We're coming for you.
Okay. So we've been very cordial with her in our relations, but she wasn't being our advocate and she wasn't fulfilling this. So when this, the, when the, when the state of Illinois joined the Military Interstate Children's Compact and signed into law the Educational Opportunity for Military Children Act, it said, it is the purposes of this act to remove barriers to educational success imposed on children of military personnel. By, among other things, facilitating on-time graduation, promoting flexibility and cooperation between the educational system, parents and the student in order to achieve educational success for the student. So why you'd said earlier, it wasn't their job to make sure that he graduates on time? This law actually made it their job to make sure that he graduates on time.
Well, I stand corrected.
Okay. Well, they weren't aware of this law either.
Oh, the laws that govern the way that they are supposed to work with the students that are in their school? Shocking.
One oh five Illinois State Code, Chapter Seventy, Section Thirty-two says, "In the event that official educational records are not available in a timely manner, the school shall enroll an appropriate place's student in good faith." The school district shall have flexibility, and, and this is in paragraph C, "The school shall have flexibility in waiving course or program prerequisites and the district's minimal graduation requirements may be modified provided that the modifications are a result of scheduling issues and not a result of students' academic failure."
Alright, can, can I say two things real quick? One, everything that you're saying is, yeah, like your son fit perfectly into this box where you people are supposed to be following in good faith, the spirit of this law and helping my son out. He's a good kid. He's getting passing grades. He's got a full course load. He's not complaining. He's not a troublemaker. He's a good kid. He's getting passing grades. He's got a full course load. He's not complaining. He's not a troublemaker. Why are you being?
That's, that was it. I, I was, I was so floored by this. Like, why are you doing this to us?
Uh, the second thing I wanna say, how satisfying is it to go into like a meeting or to talk to somebody and to quote like four sub-paragraphs down, "Well, ma'am, madam, according to Illinois State Code fifty-three, sub-paragraph four, section C, line fifteen, you're supposed to be doing your job this way. How dare you?"
Yeah, and that's kinda what happened other than the mocking dignits. I came in armed with this, showed it to her. She hadn't seen it. She read it. And ultimately she did, she decided to double and triple and quadruple down, the superintendent, Dr. Benway.
You stopped telling me how to do my job, rando guy off the street.
Yeah, yeah, we've already been very gracious to you. We've already waived a whole bunch of stuff.
In what, in the form of one class?
Do these three classes.
Why, why, why? What personal thing do you have vested in this kid not taking three classes he's already taken?
I don't know, but it felt like we, what happens to me and everyone at some point in your life. Like, let's say you are the fifteenth customer in line at Taco Bell and the person at, at the front is having a bad day and they're getting abused by every customer. And then you get to the front of the line and you just like accidentally say something rude or something like that. And they absolutely fly off the handle and blow up. It's not personal you, it's just you were the last person in line when this, the last straw on the camel's back.
You are trying to give this lady who caused your son like deliberate and like premeditated problems, you're trying to give her the benefit of the doubt. Will you stop it?
While my wife was like trying, still acting in good faith, like, oh, the school just doesn't understand. They're not giving him enough credit for his courses. Uh, she was going back and forth with the registrar and at one point she overheard the registrar say something under her breath. And it was, if we waive this requirement, that wouldn't be fair to the other children.
Oh lady, I will burn this to the ground if you're trying to apply that logic to this situation.
So I can only assume that the superintendent shared her assessment and was backing her up for that reason.
The slippery slope nonsense, like-
Yeah. Okay, so the military's aware that sometimes all the good intentions don't cover all of the situations and they have a full-time employee on the military installation called the School Liaison Officer. Enter a new character, Dr. Cynthia Doyle.
Okay, so she, I imagine she sits in an office and does nothing.
Most of the time. She has, she acts in, she does well, you know, she does all the like, welcome to the base briefings. I can help you if your kids are having trouble enrolling in school and help with these kinds of issues and stuff. I've sat through, remember how you were joking that I was sitting there playing games on my phone when I should have been absorbing this information? I actually absorbed this information. So once I, we came out of her office for the last time and exchanged the last frustrating email where she was es- Dr. Benway's escalating on us and denying what we thought was a reasonable accommodation we were asking for. We're like, alright, we're gonna have to escalate. I need to go to the school liaison officer.
Because if nothing else, they will know the more powerful processes or the levers that they can pull in order to get things moving.
Yes. Unfortunately, I was kinda disappointed. Dr. Doyle, while coming from immaculate and long line of, of, of very good educational credentials, she was kinda sleepy. Her best years were behind her. Poor health, walked with a cane, moved kinda slow. Still holding down her job, but just counting the days until retirement.
Uh, err, so I mean, that, that's, that's throw all the physical stuff aside because somebody can be slow, crotchety and walk out of a cane.
Right, Josh. And I later found out that she was a, a, a knight in shining armor that held her sword and was standing in the background of the photo when the governor was signing the twenty-fourteen law into, in, in, in place that she had helped write.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the scene from, uh, The Scent of a Woman, where, um, the blind guy, like who everybody just wrote off as some nut job, like gives that stirring testimony in the courtroom. Like you don't know what these people are capable of.
Yes. Now, here's the other thing that was kinda the problem, other than that she just seemed kinda tired. And that was, her position that appeared to be that of an omsbu- ombudsman, somebody that was like a government-appointed representative that's supposed to be independent and be an advocate, wasn't quite as free of conflict of interest as I thought. Her job had kinda morphed to where she didn't just help, um, what's mediate disagreements between parents and schools, but she also was kind of like an ambassador with the schools. So she had to maintain relationships with the principals and the superintendents and stuff. And pretty quickly, it was clear to me that she had looked at what I'd said to her and she looked at what they were asking my son to do and she decided it wasn't that bad. She's like, he can do this. He can do these hundred and thirty-five hours of coursework. Why are you fighting this fight?
Okay, like-
And she said that to me repeatedly.
Ah, I, I think, and it's, I think it's her place to say that once. And then when you explain to her, no, and then give her a good reason why, then she needs to be on your side. That's her job. It's advocate is in the title, right?
But she just never stopped doing that. She kept being like, well, you know, we could do all this other stuff, but wouldn't it just be a lot easier if he just did these online courses?
Oh, okay. Now, that's a different story. What you're saying is like, well, I could do a bunch of this other work or I could go golf tomorrow. Are you sure you really wanna track this down?
Now, in her defense, she was always available whenever I asked her to, but she was always this constant voice of, it, it's li- it's like your lawyer arguing with you to plead, to plead guilty when you don't want to. Like you, you said, it, it's his job to say that once, but then if you say no, then he needs to fight for you.
Right.
Um, so she was trying to discourage us and I just realized she, she's try- she wants to maintain a good relationship with the superintendent. She doesn't wanna fight this fight. She doesn't wanna piss her off, cause I'm gonna go away. And she's still gonna have to deal with this person. And if that person feels like they lost the battle to her, they're gonna, it's gonna be hard to maintain the relationship.
Uh, yeah, but at the same time-
She said that to me.
Well, at the same, I don't care. Like, I don't care, Ms. Doyle. I, I forgetting names already. I don't care about your-
No, no, you got it.
I don't care about your relationship with what's-her-face over here yelling at the school, telling me to, to take extra classes that are dumb. I don't care about your job. Your job is supposed to be helping me.
So she's still telling me, my son needs to take the, this hundred and thirty-five hours of coursework in March of his senior year, when he's supposed to graduate in May. And I bring her the law and I'm like, the law says they're supposed to accommodate him in this situation. It puts the burden of proof on them. They should have to prove that he needs to know this stuff, rather than just tell us we haven't checked the box. And they haven't done anything of the sort. They haven't given him a test. They didn't look at the fact that he got a fourteen-twenty on his SATs, ninety-eighth percentile. I'd like to see some of those schlubs that they're telling me needs to take these classes do that well. Not listening. So I escalate to my boss, who's a Colonel, uh, in the Air Force and who used to be the Deputy Mission Support Group Commander at that base, which means she also knows the superintendent.
Okay.
She was not just unhelpful, but antagonistic to me. Uh, I was, I was shocked. Like, I, I was so surprised. I'm not gonna say her name, but she, um, I, I went into her office, I closed the door. I explained the situation to her and she, she goes, why doesn't he just take the classes? Have you talked to the school liaison officer?
Take the classes. Stop, stop being the, stop being such a problem. Why are you the one that doesn't fit into the box that we put you in?
Yeah, a- and I'm like, because it's not fair and it's not right and he shouldn't be doing this and I need, I need you to be, to do what you should do as this, in this position as my supervisor and back me up and help me out here. And she's like, well, what did this school liaison officer say? I'm like, uh, she's kinda has a conflict of interest and she's telling him to take the classes too. She's like, well, life's just like that sometimes in the military. It just sucks sometimes. I'm like, um, a- and, and I'm not, I'm not hyper- hyperbolizing here. I, I looked her in the eye and I said, that's fine for you and me. My son is not in the military.
I mean, that, 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 and that is a powerful statement. Like, everything that we are talking about is not you, it's your son and you are fighting on his behalf because that's your job as a parent. Just because you're also in the military, that's not, yeah, that shouldn't be a conflict of interest, being a parent and being a military member. Now, before we go any further, I do have to say this. Like, I had a, a, a realization while you're talking about this. Is now, this is the third person in three disparate organizations telling you that your son should do this. And, you know, i- it's, it's one of those things, like you have to look at it from the outside perspective. I agree with everything that you're saying. You have the letter of law, everything is with you.
Maybe I'm wrong here. Maybe we should just roll over.
It's like, hey, at, at what point do you realize like, oh, maybe I am the problem? Maybe, maybe I'm the one that's interpreting this incorrectly. Maybe he does need to take these extra classes. Like, did that ever cross your mind during this whole process?
No, it didn't. It, it was just so clear to me how unjust this was. And I was shocked at the people that kept, that, that just didn't, couldn't grasp it. I thought it was mostly just because they didn't have to feel the impact of it. It, to them, it was just a weighted average of which is gonna be more trouble for me.
Uh, you see, I, this is the thing, like, I completely agree with you. And I would have done exactly the same thing and burned every bridge that I needed to in order to get my son through school. But now, like, this is, this is part of that change that I had a few years ago, where I realized I need to look at my actions sometimes too. And this is starting to trigger some of those flags, like, maybe I need to evaluate the decisions that I'm making here. I, I, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you.
I, I'd like to think I was ready to do that. Let me tell you about the next step.
Okay.
So I looked at my boss when she told me this, that she wasn't gonna back me up. And I said, look, if you're not gonna help me, I'm going to the Chief of Staff. Now, because I was at a four-star command, the Chief of Staff was a two-star general.
Okay.
But it's his job to look out for the needs of the staff and an issue regarding a member of his staff that ha- is having the local school district, you know, not be fair to their family members is an issue he would be concerned with. At least that's what I thought.
Foreshadowing.
And she said to me, what are you gonna ask him to do?
Uh, ask him to pull the political levers that a freaking two-star has to enforce the law that's on the books.
Yes, exactly. But she presented it like, there is nothing he can do that you aren't already doing, so don't waste his time, which is what she was saying to me. And so I said to her, I don't know what is within the realm of possibility for him to do, but I aim to find out.
Man, you see, there you go. That's an excellent id- way to identify the unknown unknowns. I don't know what tools he has. He does. The only way I'm gonna find out is by asking him.
Yes. So I did. I made an appointment. I went in there and he was true to his open-door policy and he saw me like within, within a day. Uh, I was really surprised. Invited me into his office.
That's because you're the only psychopath that's actually gonna go see the two-star based on his open-door policy.
Okay, so Major General John Flournoy invited me into his office. He was warm and inviting. He shook my hand and he sat there and listened to my story and then he started to interrupt me. Because to him, it didn't make any sense. Like, it wasn't computing. Like, how can this be?
Yeah.
How can it be if it's as clear as you're saying that the, the, the superintendent is stonewalling you and the school liaison officer won't back you up and, and what, what, how, this, something's not adding up. Maybe you don't understand the situation.
Because I've said this before to you, generals are insulated by their staff. They don't see real problems.
Well, okay, so he said to me, and I was surprised how efficient his solution was. Go down to the legal office, have them do a law review of this situation, provide me a brief, and if they back you up, I will go all the way on this.
That's, um, wow. I, I am, I am genuinely shocked at how, uh, uh, clear, direct, and uh, sensical that the course of action is.
So I went down to the legal office. There was a captain down there. He wrote like a three-page brief on it that completely backed me up. He said, I completely agree with Major Rich's assessment of the two, twenty-fourteen Educational Opportunity for Military Children Act. The, based on, you know, what's said here, the burden of proof is on the school to prove that the child needs to take these additional classes or they have the authority to waive them and it's their obligation to do so. He can graduate on time, sir.
Signed the law.
Signed the law. And so the lawyer, and, and I brought the school liaison officer with me to the general's office. And so we went and had a meeting with the general, me, my wife, the general, the lawyer, and, uh, the school liaison officer. And he was like, okay, I'm on board. I'll do what I can. I know the mayor. I know the Southwest Illinois Leadership Council. I got some other, uh, levers I can pull. I probably won't tell you what those are, but I'm gonna work on that. Uh, you keep me posted on what you're finding out from the school. Let's make this thing happen.
And this is the thing, alright, for those of you listening that may not be in the military, when you get to the two-star level, like the guy even mentioned, like he knew the mayor. That's not the only political, politically important person that this guy knew in the local area. I have no doubt in my mind that he knew local congressmen. I have no doubt in my mind that he was on a first-name basis with senators in the area. Like, this guy probably knew and saw and regularly spoke to everybody that's important in the legal system in this state.
And Dr. Benway had no idea what was about to descend on her. Like, when she sent us away, she probably thought, oh, those poor schlubs think they're gonna pull one over on us. There's no way they're gonna get away with this.
Oh man, and then you dropped a freaking political anvil on them.
Oh, I, I didn't, I, it took months before I understood the depth of what happened to her. I, I didn't, I, I, I'll have to show you one of the artifacts I have. I'll, I'll get to it in a minute. So I also found out that when Illinois joined the, the Military Interstate Children's Compact, which is this, all fifty states have a local commissioner. So I found out that the commissioner in the state of Illinois was a retired Navy commander that was principal of a high school up in northern Illinois. So I call him up. I'm like, sir, can you help me, you know, help mediate this conflict? I'm having my local school. I explained the situation to him. He's kinda like, well, we're here to resolve interstate issues. It's in the name. Like, this isn't really my issue.
Uh, I mean, yes and no. Like, I mean, you probably could, guy. Get off your butt.
Yes. Well, there was a reason. I later found out that when he won the election for commissioner, the other person he campaigned against was my superintendent, Darcy Benway. And that there was bad blood between them and now I was asking him to intervene in a conflict between me and his nemesis.
Uh, how incestuous is this whole system?
I couldn't believe it. You know, he, he barely won out over her in the twenty-twelve election and, and probably because of his veteran status and she's out for his job.
Uh, but how does, uh, it, it, it's frustrating that that enters in the equation of my job and do I really wanna do this?
So Alicia is dedicated the course of action of trying to get the school to come around to seeing the transcripts the right way. So she's still going back and forth with the registrar on emails that get escalated up to the superintendent. And she's just doubling and quad- tripling and quadrupling down. She's sending us things with like legal opinions and citing and giving us homework and it's getting really intimidating, that era, area. And I'm thinking, we're not making any progress there. Like, it's just, they've already decided what they're gonna do and everything they're sending us is just deter- is designed to discourage us from pursuing this any further.
Yeah.
And they'd always end with the little, the dangling thing at the end, but the offer's still on the table. Just take these three courses and you can graduate with your peers.
Oh, uh, you know what? Hang on, hang on. I, before we get to the climactic third act of this, of this amazing story that you're talking about, there is something and a person and a character in this story that we have not even addressed. What was your son's opinion of this whole thing?
So my son, Michael, has a very, um, accommodating personality. He didn't understand the depth of this. He didn't know anything about the American school system at all. Uh, you know, I, I have a master's degree in education. I was a former school teacher. He'd never even, he hadn't gone to an American school since he was seven.
Wow.
So he was just kinda like, well, if you say I have to take these three classes, I'll take them, but I'm tired and I don't want to.
This is, this is the perfect juxtaposition of, of you and your wife with your flaming swords drawn, like fighting on this hill that you're ready to die on.
Pushed us aside and said, what does the kid wanna do? He'd be like, well, what am I supposed to do?
Yeah, and the kid's back there like, guys, you don't have to die on that hill. No, you shut up. We are dying on this hill for you.
Yeah. May- maybe he'll understand it someday. When he has kids and he's trying to enroll them in school. So we're starting to run out of options. Like, it, it felt, there were sparks of hope here and there, but ultimately still it had to be the superintendent to agree to what we were saying. So I finally asked the question, well, who's her boss? Cause everybody's got a boss, right? Like, you're talking about the mayor, but he's not really her boss or the senators. They can influence her, but still, she's the one that has to answer to like the State Board of Education and those kinds of things. So that school's particular governance, probably like a lot of local communities, has a board of education that she answers to.
Okay.
For these types of issues. They meet monthly. They have a planned itinerary. Uh, and they accept applications for people to come to an open hearing and present issues before them that could potentially go against something the superintendent had said.
Okay.
So, uh, this is my hope. I'm like, alright, she's not gonna help us. She's just keep stonewalling us and we're running out of time. Cause meanwhile, like a month had passed.
Okay, so-
Now it's the end of March.
So you're, he's supposed to- So you signed up, you're gonna be the guy at open mic night at the school board meeting. Now, and where is that i- in, in relation to the rest of the process? At what po- like, how much like ammunition have you been building up on the military side when you went and did this? Like, like, line up these two timelines.
Everybody knew and there were things that were happening that were beyond my control. Like, one day I got a call from this lady that had a job title longer than my arm, that said she was from the Southwest Illinois Leadership Council. And that there was like a chamber of converse, commerce worth of people around the area that could influence things and were pulling for me. But ultimately it was still up to the school board. So they were all, they found out I was gonna go to the school board meeting. Everybody was gunning for me. Like, good job. You can do it. If it doesn't work out, we'll look at other options after that, but this is your chance. So I start preparing for this open mic night at the school board. Uh, one of the things we did is, is we found out there was this independent commission that does things for like college admissions for international students, where you send them all of your records, they'll do an assessment, translate into equivalent American records and provide an assessment. So we thought, this is our chance. We didn't know this existed. So we found out and we had to pay like three hundred dollars to get a rush job on this thing. And they sent it back and it was perfect. It was everything we thought we needed, except for one thing. For some reason, I don't know why, they'd assessed everything he'd done at like double weight.
Oh geez, okay.
So, and we just didn't pick this up, but then when we sent it to the school and we thought, okay, this is the last piece they need. They'll look at it. They'll see we're fine. We've had this independently verified. They looked at it and said, They looked at it and said, this says he, he's, you know, done twice as much education as everyone in our school.
Well, and they threw, he was, he was head boy of Pangolin House at Yarddale. I don't know how many times I've gotta tell you that.
They just threw it out. They, they completely discredited the whole independent verification of the credits and just ignored it like it didn't even exist.
Oh yeah, because you know, independent verification doesn't mean anything to anyone in this country.
Yeah. Hey, and there were still Venus lines like, you know, if we were to do this, it would undermine our credibility as an educational institution.
I don't care about your credibility. I care about my kid.
But it was like, it's like they were saying to me, so you're asking me to lie? Or you don't deserve this.
Uh, it, it's, it's, you know what it is? It's very tone deaf. It's very them looking out for themselves and not looking after the students that they're theoretically there to educate.
Yeah, a- and all of this is very insulting and it's really hard to maintain my cool during this, but I'm doing okay so far. So I.
You were like Mr. Cool because like long before, like any of the things that you're talking about would have happened, I would have done physical property damage to somebody's house.
I know. But, but can you imagine General Flournoy who's trying to get on board for me here? Like if he finds out the next day that I'd gone and like dropped the F-bomb and thrown something?
So what have you done? Well, I, uh, emailed her a couple of times. I had a couple in-person meetings. I, I flipped her car and lit it on fire in the parking lot. That didn't seem to have the effect I wanted.
Yeah, he would be off board so fast and I would be facing personal consequence. So it's pretty easy to control myself in these kinds of situations. So I decided it's time to start formulating your strategy and I'm like, I gotta think outside the box here. Like Alicia's still going down like, well, they, look, look in this email, they said on this line that, that this credit doesn't constitute the same as this. I'm like, that's not, we're not making any ground there. We need to take a complete end around. So I was looking for clarity and I went over to an old friend of mine. Now, I have not mentioned this detail yet, but I attended this exact same high school twenty-five years before.
Wait, like the same building?
The same building.
Get out of town.
The exact same building, twenty-five years before.
Oh, well, this is the problem is they found your old transcripts and you were a rabble rouser back then.
So, a- and I was absolutely not a rabble rouser. And I had a friend who still lived in town who attended high school with me there and his wife was a school teacher in the local district. So I went over to their house. I'm like, look, man, this is a situation. What can I do? And he's like, I got an idea. And he went and got out his high school yearbook and he pulled it out. And I had the list of the school board members and he's like, hey, two of the school board members were teachers at the school when you went there. Were any of them your teachers?
Oh dang. Yeah, we're.
And I'm like, yeah, that one was.
Oh geez. That's.
And I'm like, okay, I got an idea. So I, I looked at the law and I looked at the situation and I formulated my, my, um, strategy and I sent it to the lawyer and he's like, yeah, this is good, man. Go for it. So the night of the school board meeting comes, we get dressed up and, you know, like suit and tie and my wife's in a lovely dress.
Oh, you have, you have to go in service digs. You know you do. You have to be holding the wheel cap the whole time. Come on.
Uh, I considered it. I did consider going in service dress. Seriously, seriously considered it. I think my, my wife and I went back on it, back and forth on it. Ultimately decided not to wear my military service dress. Cause I wasn't representing the United States Air Force.
Fair enough.
I, I took my prepared remarks, which took about five minutes to give. My wife and I went in, sat down. We had the school liaison officer. Cause I dragged her along, cause I wanted her to suffer through this too, because it was her fault. We were in this situation.
This is your job. You are gonna sit here with us.
Yeah. So she came in, sat down. They all knew her. They're like, hi Cindy. They're like, hi Darcy, you know, like, yeah, good to see you again. These guys still won't give up on this. I know, here we all are.
I'm sorry, I'm here as this guy.
Yeah, exactly. So I was also looking like, okay, at this point, I'm asking myself, wh- what if this doesn't work? Then what? Then it's like, get a lawyer and sue. That would be super expensive, take way too long. I don't got the time or the money or the energy for that. And then at that point, why not just take the hundred and thirty-five hours of class?
Yeah.
Uh, or, or go to the press. Like this would not play well in the press. This good-natured, well-intentioned military family getting crapped on by the local school district.
But at the same time, being an active duty military member, going to the press complaining about the system. That, that really is the nuclear option.
Okay. And it was very much a nuclear option, cause when I started looking into that option, I did some research and I ran into a rash of stories by one reporter in the St. Louis area who was very critical of Dr. Darcy Benway. Because she was the highest paid educational person in the region by a wide margin.
So you had like, like an, a, a, a listening ear and a willing, like a venue to post all of your dirty laundry that you have about this woman.
There was a reporter that would have been feasting on my every word if I were to decide to go to the press.
But still, again, the nuclear option.
So the night of the school board meeting arrives, my strategy is to end around, you know, rather than argue with their logic and get all bogged down in what credit transfers to what. I just want, so I sat down and I read my remarks. I gave them a lot of credit for everything they'd done up to that point. I acknowledge how hard they work and that they were trying to do the right thing. And that was evidenced by these things that they'd already done. And then I said, and twenty-five years ago, I came here to this school and I was in the same situation and I could see their faces completely change. And I said, I moved four thousand miles. I didn't know anyone. My whole life was thrown upside down and I come here in the middle of the year. And the school accommodated me. They helped me get into classes I need. They did what I needed and smoothed my transition. I was able to graduate on time, graduate from college, and here I am now. And now my son, twenty-five years later, sitting here in front of you, and he needs the same thing from you. The law here that was written in twenty-fourteen says that you not only can, but should do this. And now the rest is up to you.
Ooh. Alright, you need to put these in the show notes. Like we, we need this whole speech that you, that you said, because I'm sure you have it PDF'd somewhere. We need that in the show notes.
Okay, so they dismiss us, send us out in the hall and we're sitting on like kid chairs in the hallway, waiting for the answer of this board. I've never done anything like this in my life. So it's really weird to be sitting there where seven people are in session with a secretary taking notes discussing our fate. The school liaison, after about ten minutes was like, I've never seen it take this long. I don't know what this means.
It means that what's her face is still in there saying, no, I don't wanna. And it was like, really? Come on.
Okay, plot twist. So they call us back in, we sit down in chairs in front of the board, everyone's smiling and they said, we have decided to we've decided in your favor to waive the remaining one and a half credits and allow your son to graduate on time with his peers.
And then the balloons dropped from the ceiling and the music started playing.
And I was, I was in complete shock and disbelief. I was like, wow, that's amazing. And they, and they said, and this was fateful. Uh, but this is not, this is a non-precedent setting decision. It's only for your specific situation because of all these details and stuff like that, blah, 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 blah. Which was them covering their backs heads and saying, you don't have to do this for anyone else, including your second son. Who we're now forcing to retake all the classes he took in England, but there's time to force him through all those classes before he graduates.
Nobody cares about your caveats and you're covering your butt. This is the third act. This is the scene where the hero triumphs over the bureaucracy and everybody stands up and cheers.
Yeah, yeah. A- and after the meeting, they, they dismissed it pretty quick and then everyone came. The principal came over who was really kind of a non-player in all of this. He was like, congratulations. I, I know your kids. They're great kids. I'm really happy for you. I'm like, where were you? The, one of the school board members was like, oh yeah, I think I remember you in my class. I'm so glad you're doing well. You know, really cheering for Michael here. Another school board member came over and was like, oh, I'm a veteran. Really glad we're able to help you out here. Major General Flournoy texted me before I'd even made it out to my car. I didn't tell him the result. It wasn't televised. The, the JAG got promoted, uh, you know, they published the results. I mean, everybody was elated and, and we were relieved and stuff. And Michael got his diploma, but this is real life. It wasn't just a happy ending.
This sounds like a happy ending.
Well, Jerus still got screwed. You know, he still had to retake a bunch of classes, cause they wouldn't acknowledge the validity of his GCSE credits that he'd gotten in the UK.
That sounds like the compromise the board had to make with the superintendent for her to save face.
Yes, yes. I'll get to that in a minute. Michael still got screwed. I mean, his, his fellow peers were all like, you know, doing half-days, the, the final semester of senior year. And they weren't waiting until the end of March to decide if they were gonna graduate in May so they could apply for college. They'd already all applied for college. He didn't even know if he was gonna graduate yet, so he hadn't applied for college.
That sucks.
Yeah. I mean, this is, this is real life and the villain got away. You know, Dr. Benway got to like claim a victory.
Now, Dr. Benway wasn't the villain. She was the face of the villain, which was the bureaucracy that the, is the American education system.
Okay. So the school liaison officer had a few friends in the room who later contacted her and told her about what happened while we were out and they were in closed session.
Ooh, we get the gossipy side of it.
Apparently, the school board had already discussed our issue in advance and it decided they were gonna settle, they were going to decide against us unanimously until they heard my remarks.
Ooh.
After we left the room, I think Dr. Benway saw the writing on the wall and in the quiet moment before they just started, um, before they started the discussion, she decided she completely switched position and advocated for us and led the argument in our favor. She saw her out and headed for the exit.
So you.
She could have done that a hundred times before that moment.
But she saw that.
She saw the political landslide coming.
Yes, she saw the tide turning against her and decided to get out in front of it.
Absolutely she did. And so everyone defected and the vote was unanimous in our favor and she got to act like she was our hero.
That, that, that's irritating. Like at a, at a, at a, at a, at a, at a part of my brain that wants justice, itches at that.
If at any point in this entire ordeal, we had just stopped paddling, we would have drowned. We'd have lost by default.
But no, but she was.
Would have danced on our grave. She wasn't our advocate.
Oh, but yes, she was because she was the one that told the school board that she could totally change her opinion right at the last minute, right in the eleventh hour when it was most important.
Okay, so I've got an epilogue and lessons learned. I know we're running a bit long here, but I'm almost to the end. So you know how I told you I didn't know all the things that General Flournoy was doing? Well, apparently he knew someone at the state attorney general's office that is concerned about veterans affairs. And almost immediately, he sent them the most threatening looking legal summons I've ever seen in my life. I got a copy of it. It is beautiful. It went, addressed to Dr. Darcy Benway. It came registered mail, like they had to sign for the letter. And it was like, you must provide us a legal brief of why you're denying military veterans rights by the fourth of, of March.
Ooh, yeah, that's.
And she co- what I didn't know at the time is that she sent me an email or something and be like, we don't even have legal counsel at this school. What are you doing? And I didn't know what she was talking about.
Lady, you called down the whirlwind. That's what happened.
So, oh man, this letter's beautiful. I, I'll look at it and see if I can put it in the show notes. It, it, it was, it was great. I'm so, I would love to have seen her face when she got this letter. Okay, so she comes away squeaky clean, despite having dirty hands here. Epilogue. A year later, the Military Interstate Children's Compact Commission holds their elections. And the guy I talked to that was worthless and didn't help me, lost the election to you'll never guess who.
To, no, to the person who like went out of her way to uphold veterans' rights by permitting this student
She did.
With absolutely no records to graduate on time.
I don't know this for certain, but I would not be surprised if she did not use Michael's case as an example of why she, she should be elected as the commissioner of the Military Interstate Children's Compact.
I can absolutely promise you that's what she did. This person sounds like an, a very savvy political person. And so of course, all of her defeats look like victories in hindsight.
Her application for that commission was endorsed by Dr. Cindy Doyle, the school liaison officer at Scott Air Force Base and the wing commander of Scott Air Force Base. And here's a quote from, uh, her campaign. Uh, the high school principal, Rich Bickle, made the announcement of Dr. Benway's appointment during last month's school board meeting, adding, Dr. Benway has been working very closely with Scott Air Force Base and our military families to support military impacted students and ease their transition into our high school. But also on a larger regional level to ease the issues that military impacted families and students face.
Ben, do you know what you are right now? You are the old crone in the princess bride that yelled liar! Like, like the princess buttercup comes out like liar! That's you right now.
Yeah. I, 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 I wish, I wish I could forgive and dismiss this from my heart so much that I didn't do things like look up these news stories and find out, cause otherwise I wouldn't have known. I wouldn't have known that Dr. Benway won the election. That's way outside of my realm of like why I would even know this.
Yeah, you know a lot about the internal workings of the Illinois School Board for some reason.
Yeah, eh, you know, I can imagine her standing before this commission and be like, this poor military student arrived from inferior British schools and I risked my reputation and took on the entire school board to make sure he graduated on time.
There is a more just universe where she would struck by lightning in that moment.
Alright, so that's the epilogue. Today, he's a college student. He's fine. He didn't get delayed. Uh, I hope he forgives us for our failings. I, I, I don't know if he cares that we, you know, went to the mattresses for him. I'd like to think, early on in this, if we had been able to identify the registrar and the difficulty she was having in not supporting us, if we'd been able to better support her and prevent this whole thing in the first place.
What? You drive me nuts with this. Like how could we have done better to help everyone just see the right thing to do? And then a rainbow blooms over your head. Like shut up, man. The whole world was.
I've been kinda sarcastic and cynical in some of this, Josh.
I know, but like the whole world was against you. You pulled every lever that you possibly could and barely squeaked by. And all you can think is, what could I have done better? Like shut up, man. You barely won in the first place.
Yeah, it could have gone worse. I could have, I don't know. I don't know. You know, you get more, what, what does the saying go? Flies with honey than with vinegar? I don't know why you want flies, but it, it just feels like there were opportunities that we could have got people to be more incentivized to act in our favor and didn't.
Yeah, you get more flies with honey, but vinegar burns. So like that's when you eat that sometimes.
So that is the tale of Ben versus the Board of Education.
Oh, that was like Ben versus bureaucracy on steroids. I hope everybody enjoyed hearing about how the, the little guy won. Like this is screaming to be made into a made-for-TV movie on Hallmark. Have you screenplayd this? Because this is, this is a legit story.
I could. It, it does sound like it could be that. I don't know. I don't know anything about writing a screenplay, but I, that one, that one is now also in the hopper.
Outstanding. Alright, well, that's what we talked about today. What are we talking about next time, Ben?
Well, not next time, but the time after next. I think it's time for us to review a fiction book. Uh, you and I, after we'd read The Hobbit, had kinda somehow queued up World War Z. I don't even know who it's by, but I thought that sounded like a great idea. So for episode fifty-five, that'll come out a month from now, uh, we will be reviewing that book, listeners, if you would like to read along.
Now, I will say this, like, don't immediately dismiss it because World War Z is a fictional zombie book. Like it, it's not a horror book. It is written in a very unique way. It has a very unique perspective on what a zombie apocalypse would look like and how we would overcome. I highly, highly, highly encourage all of our readers to read it. It's not that long. It's very, very good and like, it's just great. It's a great book.
Yes. And you'll get, you'll get more out of our discussion. You're free to listen if you didn't read it, but if you wanna read it and then be part of the discussion, great. There's lots of ways you can do that. Uh, every time I put up a new episode, I also put an open thread on our subreddit, on Reddit slash R slash Bad at Magic. Where you can join in anonymously to the discussion. Or as a lot of people did this last, um, cycle, you can go on our Facebook. You can see all the artifacts and images I put in the image gallery. You can also join in, uh, on the discussion for the things we talked about in the episode. Or you can go to our website, uh, bad at magic, s- uh, dot live.
If you like what we talked about today, uh, please recommend us to a friend. Uh, if you liked what we talk about, maybe your friends will like us too. If you really like us and you just enjoy all of our conversations we have, consider taking the phone out of your pocket and giving us a good rating on the podcast player of your choice. You would be amazed at the visibility we can get from something like that. If you love us, if you can't get enough of Ben fighting the good fight for his kids, because that's apparently all he does. Consider becoming a patron on our Patreon page.
And until next time, try to be a little less bad at magic.